Administrative staff is here and we're grateful to have so many members of the public here. Thank you for being here. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. This will be led by our development guy, king of all things zoning, Scott Langford.
Thank you Chair.
All right. Thank you Scott for that. And we are going to begin with a couple of special recognitions, but we're going to start with the recognition from certain members of the West Jordan Police Department. And I imagine we have Chief Wall in time here. There you are. To lead us off with this.
Thank you. We had had the opportunity to go to the Utah Housa Police Association Conference last month. In fact, Mayor came down and joined us and that was really special. There was of all the cities recognized, only two mayors came. So that was a, we really appreciated that. And so my fellow police chiefs were a little jealous and that's okay. We had two officers recognized there. Detective Ben Sullivan, who couldn't be here with us tonight, was recognized as the Police Officer of the Year from a major department, divisions within the state. So that's quite a, that's quite a notable accomplishment. That's one officer from the entire state nominated by peers, not by police chiefs. And so that was very exciting for us. And we also had an officer receive a Purple Heart. Officer Trujillo, now a Purple Heart doesn't mean we went in and messed up things. It means that he was wounded in the line of duty and fully recovered. You may be able to recall when he was shot last year and we're great. We could ask him to dance if you would like. I'm sorry, I didn't ask you. Chris, are you okay with dancing? No? All right.
Yeah, there's no music anyway, so.
No, we're incredibly proud of Officer Trujillo, Detective Sullivan, really all of our officers. We have a wonderful crew. You know, that's really what sets us apart in this city. And beyond that, we have officers who focus on some very simple words. You matter like I matter. And that's what drives the success of the Police Department for the individual officers who are out there on the street at night, when most of us, usually frankly, including me, are sound asleep in our beds. And they're out there watching over us because to us, the citizens of West Jordan matter. Also wanted to mention that at the Las Vegas Police K-9 Trials last month, Officer Miguel Rodriguez came in second. It's a national competition. He had a death in the family. Otherwise, he would have, would have been here this evening and we'll make sure that he gets the appropriate congratulations at the right moment. So thank you to the council for your support. It's really exciting that you can be in a city and a police department where your city council is pleased to see good things by the Police Department. So you're not going to dance, but somebody's going to play a lullaby for you. Anyway, thank you very much for letting us come tonight and for supporting your Police Department. And remember, it is your Police Department. Thank you.
Yep. Come on up to the front. We'll step down real quick for a quick, quick picture. And I believe we've got some certificates over here. Or we're missing a signature? We're missing a signature.
And now we have Detective Sullivan. He's here. So just in time for the picture.
Excellent. Come on up.
This is good because. You can shake your head no, but I'm a chief of police and I say yes. One, two, three. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that and for our one, for our amazing Police Department. Not every city is blessed to have the, the chief that we have. Obviously, nobody is blessed to have the chief that we have. And the, we have some of the best officers in the state and apparently in the country. So that's great. The next item up for bids is we're going to recognize the Copper Hills Girls Wrestling Team for taking state. And we'd like to bring up. That's awesome. Would like to have their coach and or administration just come up real quick and just come on up to the mic there, Scott and, and just tell us a little bit about how you got to where you are. And then we'll have the girls come up. We'll take a picture. We got something for you guys too.
Okay, well, for those who do not know, welcome to the team, family. This is the girls wrestling coaching, not the girls wrestling team. I know it's a new progressive world, but women's wrestling is actually the fastest growing sport in the country right now. And it's absolutely exploding. We're excited to be a part of it. And I think not only are we a part of it, but I believe that Copper Hills is leading the way in that sport in the state of Utah. It's exploded here on the team. We've been working really hard to grow and build and develop that sport. And we've been successful. Three years in a row, we took second in state. And this year, we were excited to come over that hurdle and take first. The girls behind me have worked extremely hard to make that happen. But what I'm most proud about when it comes to these young women, aside from the hard work dedication that they put in to be a wrestler, is the way that they do it. Across the board, as you talk to other wrestling coaches and programs around the state, Copper Hills is known for sportsmanship and character, which isn't always easy to do in a physical combat sport. But across the board, we receive dozens of handwritten letters every year from other coaches and parents from around the state that just want to congratulate these girls for not only winning, but doing it the right way because we don't always win, right? There's losses and that's what's, that's what's great about the sport is it teaches these young women how to get up when things are hard and how to do things the right way and win and lose like a champion. And so not only they represent Copper Hills well, but they absolutely represent West Jordan well. Not just here locally, but nationally, we've got a lot of national champions and All-Americans and kids that are wrestling in college. And so a lot of really great wrestling taking place here, not just in Utah, but here in West Jordan. So we're very proud of these girls.
That's awesome. Thank you so much. Let's have you guys come up and we'll, we'll get a picture with the council here too. We've got a certificate for you guys as well, I believe. So come on up and we'll come down and we'll get a picture with the team. How many are here? We got a lot. Yeah, come on up. I was thinking about that, but I don't know. Should we stay up here? Let's have the council stay up here. We'll just squish together and we'll be in the back row. Right. And there's a track meet tonight and I didn't even put two and two together. My daughter was a track athlete at Copper Hills, so.
Yep, you're good. One, two, three.
Wait, wait, wait. Out for social media. Got to post it to social media. Yep, thanks.
Guys, thank you so much for coming out. I know it's been a little while since you guys actually won, but your coach, you know, is an international celebrity and he's all over the globe. So we got to catch him when he's here. But what an awesome accomplishment. We're so proud of having, having you here in West Jordan and we're grateful for your sport and the way you guys represent. Thanks for being here. You are welcome to stay. You are not required to stay. Just to give you a little preview of what's coming up on the agenda, we're going to be talking a couple of rezones, a waiver of fees. We're going to talk about some grant programs and a lease agreement. So it's riveting stuff. If you're in a government class, you have to attend one of these meetings anyway, so you might as well, you know, stick around. But you are under no obligation. You are free to get up and go whenever you, whenever you'd like. But moving to the next item on the agenda, it's public comment period. This is the chance for anybody in the audience who may or may not have already spoken, come up and, and give the council a piece of your mind. You have three minutes. We do have one, two, three, four, five public hearings on the agenda. If you are here to speak on either of the rezones, the waiver of fees, or the CDBG grant program or the South Valley Services lease, we'd ask that you keep those or hold on the moment for those who's coming up in the meeting still. But if you want to talk about anything else, this is your three minutes to address the council. So we'll go ahead and, and call the public comment period open. Anybody's wanting to address the council in the room, just come on up. By the way, if you're online, you have the opportunity to participate as well. You just raise your hand on the Zoom or star nine on a telephone.
Is this on?
That is on. Just give us your name so we know who you are.
Wes Jamet. I live in West Jordan, just over on the other side of Sugar Factory Road. So are we trying to understand what you said earlier? So we're not talking, not accepting comments about the new residential that could be going in?
No, you, you can, if you speak to it now, just don't speak to it again later in the public hearing. You get one bite of that apple.
Has the rezoning already been approved? Can anybody show me on a map where 1950 West is supposed to go out onto Gardner Lane? Because there's houses all along there. The only place I can see that road is going to be about 12 feet wide.
We can have our planning, this is not really a back and forth so much, but we can have our planning director talk to you here in just a minute.
The only other thing I need to ask is there was a glass recycling bin right there by the pool. It's no longer there. Where did it go and is it coming back?
It's at the Public Works Building, but Corbin, do you want to? Again, this is for us to listen, but yeah, we'll have.
Can you just tell me where it is?
We'll have the staff.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep, no problem. Thanks Wes. I should have mentioned that at the beginning that this is really our time to listen. If you have questions, we have our staff get back to you because they know much more than the seven of us do usually. Anybody else who's wanting to address the council this evening on anything? I'm not seeing anybody else in the room jumping up, pre-public hearing. Mr. Anderson, anybody online?
Of the individuals that are attendees online, I see no one raising their hand. Thank you.
Wonderful. All right. So we'll go ahead and close the citizen comment, public comment portion of the meeting and go to reports to council. We'll start with city council reports. Anybody from the council who'd like to report on what you've been up to? Councilmember Whitlock, we'll start with you.
Chair, we received a email regarding Mills on Wills. I'm just wondering if we want to maybe add that to a discussion item at some point?
I'm hearing that you're hard to hear. Can you?
Okay. Is that better? Mills on Wills, just wondering if there's someone else that would want to put that on an agenda to talk about? They're basically just reaching out and asking us if we want them to come speak to us or if they, if we can help them promote getting volunteers. Thank you Chair.
Well, thank you. Councilmember Green.
Just a couple of things. One, it was, it was good to attend Utah League of Cities and Towns with you guys last week. There were, there were some, there were, I think there were some beneficial things that we were able to bring out of that and come back. What I did want to say, particularly for a bunch of you that are here because you have to be here. If you haven't seen, the council office put out the announcement for next year's youth council. And so we are taking applications for next year's youth council. They are due here in a couple of weeks. We would love to see, we have up to 20 slots available on the youth council. We'd love to see 20, 20 high school students. For those of you that are sitting in the audience and don't know, we have a youth council now that represents West Jordan, Copper Hills, and Taylorsville High because we have somebody from Taylorsville. Did I miss a high school, Warren? Who lives in West Jordan City boundaries. We don't have anybody on the council from itinerous, but if there's somebody that wants to join, we'd love to have them. So for that, and then yesterday, I will tell you and Derek will get mad. I'm going to say it was great to attend Chief Bowers retirement. For those of you that don't know Chief Bauer, he's not a chief in the West Jordan Fire Department, but he is a chief in the Utah National Guard. So once a chief, always a chief. But Dave, Dave retired yesterday from the fire department, 22 years. But he also, he, he, he serves the community doubly. He, not only did he serve in the West Jordan Fire Department, but he also serves in the Utah National Guard. And his unit happens to be just across the tarmac from the fire station and he's back driving Apaches now. And, and so all the best wishes to, to paramedic slash Chief Bauer. And I wish I could have gone to the other retirement yesterday for our soon part, soon to be departed lieutenant who's headed for Woods Cross. I wish I could have been to both, but the time didn't allow, but thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the council? I just wanted to mention one thing that I took out of the ULCT conference. So the six of us went down to St. George this last week. The League of Cities and Towns is an organization where all the cities kind of come together and, and advocate for interests of cities, right? And they had a conference last week down in, down in St. George and we were privileged to hear the keynote address was from the former Olympian from Utah, Noel Picas Pace, who won a silver medal in, in 2014 in the skeleton. That's when he is, go headfirst down the ice on a sled, right? One thing that she said that really stuck out to me that I just wanted to share in, in this meeting was she said, you go where you look. Now, I know this is true. I used to mountain bike a lot and I hit a couple of rocks that I looked at that I probably shouldn't have looked at and went on, you know, over the handlebars a couple of times. Because you go where you look. And as that applies to a city, I think it's, it's really a great lesson for us to remember to look at what we want to achieve and not look at what we don't want to achieve and focus on where we want to go as a city. So for us as, as elected people in the city and, and for, you know, our staff and, and those that work here, I think it's just important to have a really clear vision of where we're going to go. So that was just something I heard that I really got a lot out of and wanted to share. Seeing no other council reports, we'll move to the council office. We'll go to Mr. Anderson for your report. Other camera.
It's busy. I don't have anything particular to report, but I do want Mr. Hallmark to just report additional information about the youth council and some things coming up.
Just summarizing again, what council member Green has already said, that the youth council program year is wrapping up with the conclusion of school next month. So we are recruiting for next year's youth council. So with that being said, we'll be hitting up high schools. We posted a flyer yesterday on Facebook. We'll be doing Peach Jar, going to the high schools in person, getting some physical flyers out and trying to build on a successful first start. The inaugural year, rather. We have a, we have a team, we're teaming up with the Sandy City Youth Council on Saturday for a regional cleanup at Dimple Dale Park. We'll have another activity between then and May 22nd, when the youth council comes to a city council meeting and gives you a formal wrap up of their program year. So look forward to hearing from them then. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. I'll go down to the mayor's office. Mayor.
Thank you. I have a lot of fun things in my report today. Wait till he gets the first picture up. So the, at the Sikh temple last Sunday, there was the, I'm going to pronounce the song by try. Basakhi Celebration. And they invited me as the mayor of West Jordan to go to it. And they provided the city of West Jordan with this cool award or recognition, which I took in behalf of the city. And there I am with the other leaders of that group. And something really exciting about this, this temple is located on 78 Hertz South, 22 something west, 24 west, something around there. Anyway, the property directly to the north of them, they are going to be building a new temple. They expect to be pulling a permit for that in the next couple of weeks. So there'll be another new temple in.
The temple's coming up all over the place.
That's right. So I was going like this there, doing my temple work while I was with them. Okay, next on here, we now have in city hall, a place we can park your bicycles inside. We're safe and secure. And there's my bicycle hanging on our new bike racks, which is over back on the south side of the building. So you can come in that entrance and right there and hang your bike up if you choose to do so. We have the Truck Ranch groundbreaking. Thank you, those council members who were able to come and join us for that. And this is an exciting event that we've been waiting for. They're about a year behind schedule, but they are moving forward. So we're excited to have that happening. Brian is not here today, so I'm going to be providing us with some traffic updates. This here is the roundabout over there by Smith's and on 780 South, 5800 West, give or take. The work on the sewer lines is getting close to being wrapping up. You can see where they ran that sewer line right down through the center of that roundabout there. And that's caused part of that to be closed. They will be putting temporary patches on there and open that up probably in another two weeks. And then the additional work that will be happening, which is actually happening west of this, going further west, will be starting after that. We got things worked out with Rocky Mountain Power. We got work, things worked out with Kern River Gas. We got things worked out with UDOT because you know, I had to, since we're getting state money, we have to run all this to UDOT, get them, their approvals on it. And we got the plans and bid documents all put together. And we're supposed, we're waiting to hear back from UDOT, which will take a couple of works. And then our work will begin to add those additional lanes on 78, which will be a great relief. The patches on these, I mentioned there'll be temporary patches is because if you've been on that roundabout, you know it's in really sad shape. And so we want to, when we do the other repaving, include that roundabout and go all the way down to fix it 600 West. So we didn't want to do a permanent one and then patch into that. So we'll do a temporary one and then we'll add a permanent one to that when we do the rest of the roads. 13th West widening. Our phase one widening, that's what it looks like. Does that look pretty good to you? So the crews have returned to the finishing the remaining items along that place. And we'll continue to go through. We've had adding street light installation, stem concrete installation. And the temporary asphalt will be removed and permanent asphalt will be put in. That roundabout is going to be disappearing, not the roundabout, I'm sorry. The roller coaster ride will be going gone. Then we'll have finals pavement striping and we will be doing landscape on there. So that'll be look really sharp when it looks good. When it's completed, so.
Mayor, remind us, are there bike lanes on both sides?
Correct.
Okay.
Looks like a, yeah. Hey Mayor, on, on the 13th West, how close is Dominion Energy to finish? Are they, are they on time? Are they going to finish in June or are?
Yes, they, they tell us they're on time and I'm taking their word for it because I don't want to hear otherwise. So we're optimist, we're cautiously optimistic that they will complete when they said they would. And they said they are still on schedule. So yes. I know fooled me once, shame on you, me, you know. Okay, 6200 South. I don't know if you drive this road very often. If you do, you know it's in desperate need of repair. We have worked out everything between Kearns and Salt Lake County and West Jordan. And this is going to be happening real soon. The bids went out on April 17th and it's out for three weeks. And so it'll be awarded in May and the construction should start probably in July and get that wrapped up for us. The storm drain, that's right. Storm drains first because we don't want to tear the road up after it. Once the storm drains done, then we'll go through and put new pavement down. So it's going to be a long summer on 6200 South. And if you ever use 6200 South, you'll know it gets a lot of traffic, which means some of that will be diverting over 70th South and some will to 54th South while that construction is happening and some will just be going just a little bit slower. And the sad news is even after that's done, there will be no bike lanes on 6200 South. There simply is not the room for that. Okay. 1300 West, we talked about Dominion. This is Dominion. So we talked about them and they're supposed to be wrapping their things up there. There's the 36 inch gas line is what they're putting in there. And they should be getting out, tying in that soon. Okay, 8600 South Bridge flyover. This is exciting news. Doesn't that look great? Okay, the crews will continue to paint the 8600 South Bridge over Mountain View Corridor during the nighttime hours through the end of the week. And nighttime hours are from 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Then residents may hear a little noise, some dust, some vibration, some lights is what they do that. And the fence landscaping will be there and we expect it to open mid-May. I've got a couple of ideas in my back pocket that I want to do. The day before they open it, I want to do an opportunity for bicyclists to experience riding the bike over that and get to Rodwood Park by riding the bike over to say 8600 South. But what might be even more cool is doing like a, a bike bus from Copper Hills High School over there to Rodwood Park. We'll see if we can make that work. And if we do, I'll make sure you and the schools are aware of it and they can have that great experience. And then we'll open up to the public on the next day after that. Okay. So West Jordan has lots of roads under construction. A lot of people think that's bad because they don't like construction slows them down, but it's really good because it makes our roads better. And Brian has put more time and effort into road construction than we've ever had before. We're doing more roads, making more improvements and we're making progress. So that is all good news. Okay, some upcoming events. On September 27th is our, did I miss the page? Nope. Yep, I did. Thank you. Google Fiber. Oh, let's talk about Google Fiber. That's happened in various city areas throughout our city, as you can see on this map here. And the good news or the bad news is Google Fiber will provide additional options and people can get internet and helps keep the cost down. The bad news is it's disruptive while it's going in. We have, and I've sent you an email on that today. We have inspectors who took care of the work that Google Fiber does and make sure that they are keeping things up to our city standards. And they are doing a fairly good job on doing that. Sometimes they need to be reminded. If you want to know where the status is or what areas are being serviced, I will send you a link for that, which will show you this map here that shows you those areas they're working in. Century Link is also adding internet to our city. I mean fiber internet. They are still working and just about wrapped up the Camelot subdivision, which they should be knocking, getting out of that area quite soon. And then additional permits have been put on hold until they finish restoring everything there. So in other words, we're not going to let them start a new area until they complete the area they've been in. And a couple of times they've dragged their feet a little bit, so we kind of tightened it up a little bit. Because our greatest strength that we have is not approving their permit until they get the other one done. So we only let one out at a time until they do that. Okay, right now in the city of West Jordan, not just the work we're doing, but any other company or state that's doing work in our city, they need to get a permit from us. We have 85 encroachment permits in our city right now. That tells you there's a lot of activity happening. It could be the work that they just wrapped up on Redwood Road. Or it could be work that another cable company is doing or an internet company or Dominion Gas and things like that. That's all across our city. And we have inspectors who always make sure that they wrap that up, they meet our standards. And we keep an eye on that. Overlays. It's about time for overlays now that the weather is warm enough. We're going to be starting that. I will be sending you a link that will show you all the streets that get the overlays. And the HA5, which is a high density mineral bond, those streets will be getting that. The way that works is the mineral bond, you know, you've seen do the crack seals. This seals the entire street, which is, makes it last a lot longer, kept the moisture from escaping and keeps water from getting inside of there, which causes it to crack in the winter months. So it extends the life of the road. Sometimes when the life of the road is poor in the first place, we don't want to add that sealant on there because it simply doesn't work. The road's not in good condition. In those cases, we may just let the road deteriorate another year or two because it's going to have to have an overlay anyway. And see if we can get a couple. And see if we can get a couple more years out of it and then put the overlay on. So the roads to get those, some people says, well, it's not that bad of shape. Why are they doing that? That is why. So it doesn't get in that bad of shape. So I'll be sending that link over to you so you can see where those are going to be. Furniture Row, they have been issued a building permit and they have submitted some minor changes to their building permit. So that's gone back in and they're going to be making some changes there. And then once those changes are made and that's been approved, then you'll see construction begin. So they delayed themselves by making those changes and we're working with them to do that going. Earlier today, I had the opportunity for the first time in my life to do a tank inspection. I got to inspect a water tank. And that's what it looked like after I came out. So I got to go, this is the one over on Grizzly Way. We have some people there cleaning it and I wanted to check to see how they were doing and what they were doing. And that was my great opportunity. You're not seeing a hat on my head at the time. That's because they got to put this helmet on that looks like two thousand leagues under the sea. And weighs like forty pounds. I'm here to tell you, we have nice clean water. I could see all the way across the entire tank to the other side. And see the work that they were doing and our water meets federal specifications and exceeds them. We have good clean drinking water here in the city. If anybody here or anybody else wants to meet with the mayor, I have open office hours Thursday, May second from four to six PM. And you could also meet me at the First Friday Concert on May third at the Vidian. Every first Friday of each month, we have free concerts at the Vidian. We invite you to come, something different every time. They're local bands, local as in from the state of Utah. And we have activities prior to that for the kids, if they want to come and do that. And this time it'll be plant kits. And then we will be starting our food trucks at the First Friday event starting this next one in May. And it looks like it's going to be a celebration. We're going to have Pacific Islander Culture Music and Dance with the Island Time Two. Oh, you guys ought to come, you can dance. And so I look forward to that. And then another exciting thing that I really like is our West Jordan Dumpster Day. So if anybody has something that's too big to fit in your trash can at your front of your house, bring it over to Public Works on May fourth. We'll take all the big weird shaped items or the small little simple things as well. We'd be happy to take those for you. Whether it's green waste or regular trash, we will take it on May fourth at Public Works. That's my report. Sorry, it was so long, but part of it was Brian too. So you won't hear from him now.
Thank you. That was, that was quite the report. Any questions for the mayor? All right, let's go to the city administrators report. If there's anything left to talk about in the city, Mr. Lee.
I want to ask Chief Maxfield to come up and make you aware of a couple of events that are coming up in the fire department as well.
Good evening, Council. As Corbin said, we have a couple of events coming up in the fire department that we wanted to extend an invitation to each of you and let you know about them. The first is our annual fire station run, which takes place, each of the firefighters that was hired in the last year. Runs from each of our fire stations and ends up at Station Fifty Two, where we have breakfast for them. And they sign our vision statement. So each of you are welcome to come to that. We are inviting. Family members and, and any of you who would like to run as well to join in the leg from Station Fifty Three down to Fifty Two. If you want to do that, plan on being at Station Fifty Three at about eight twenty. If you would like to just join us for breakfast, that will be at about nine o'clock at Station Fifty Two next door.
Which day is that?
That, oh, sorry, that is May fourth.
May fourth.
Yep. And then the next event is our community open house at the fire station at Station Fifty Three. That will be May ninth. That's a Thursday evening. That will go from four PM to seven PM. We will have the fire station open for people to walk through and take tours. We'll have some little demos of. Some of the things that we do in the fire department and some activities for kids. And this year we've also invited our brothers and sisters in blue. And some of the West Jordan PD will be there doing some canine demonstrations and some other things. So should be a great event. It's usually very successful. So we'll come forward to that.
Excellent. Councilman McGree.
May fourth is also West Jordan Firefighters Day, if you remember.
Yeah.
Because it was in conjunction with International Firefighters Day. So for all of those residents, the May fourth is also West Jordan Firefighters Day.
It's also the dumpster day and it's also Star Wars Day. So.
It's a busy day.
Let's make sure everybody's, you know, appropriately dressed for the run. All right. Thank you, Chief. Anything else from the staff?
Just want to let you know also this Saturday, April twenty ninth is the Art in the Park Festival, brought on by the Cultural Arts Society of West Jordan. It goes from eleven AM to six PM. It's really a fun event.
Is that a rain or shine? Because it may be wet.
Yeah, I believe, uh, at least portions of it are under the pavilion. So they got a roof overhead for parts of it.
All right, cool. All right, any questions for staff? Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes, thank you. I do. What do we know about air conditioning? Because I'm even hot and if I'm hot, I'll bet these people are dying.
I'm dying. And I got a fan.
Yeah, the air conditioning, the chiller in this building was, uh, had some repairs last week that were done. Those repairs were completed, but in the process of completing those repairs, a secondary issue. Came up and required that the system be shut down until that secondary issue get resolved. Parts have been ordered and expedited. We think those parts are two, three weeks out from the manufacturer. We're getting them here as quickly as we can.
Place your bets. As long as they're not coming from the electrical panel wholesale company. We'll see what we can do. All right. Thank you so much for, for your reports and there's a lot going on in the city. It's that time of year where it's, uh. We, you know, it's fun to be outside. So we've got a lot more things that we can do. Not the least of which is. Building stuff. And in that. Vain, our next item on the agenda is. The public hearing, it's item six A on the agenda for ordinance twenty four seventeen. There it is. This is a petition by MacArthur Homes requesting a rezone sixteen point three six acres. From an A one agricultural zone to R one eight, which is a single family residential zone. Or Pearson Farms, this is at nineteen ninety six and nineteen eighty six, West Gardner Lane, both very good years. Mr. Forsyth, Mark Forsyth is leading this one off.
All right. Thank you, Chairman, members of the council. Alan, can we go to the next slide? Perfect. All right. So before I get into this, I just kind of wanted to. Give a little bit of information about the item that you're reviewing tonight. So this is. Just a standard rezone from an A one zone, which is an agricultural zone of one acre lots. To an R one eight C zone, which is a single family residential zone. Requiring minimum of eight thousand square foot lots. So with this rezone, there's no change to the future land use map. It's consistent with what's already on that map. And I should clarify that this is not a planned community. So there's not going to be any master development plan, no master development agreement, no density bias, no incentives, no amenities. No specific density numbers that we need to approve tonight. So. Pretty much all the specifics of the subdivision. Will be determined at a later date and we'll need to meet the ordinances that are already on the books. So again, this is just a, this is a legislative decision, not an administrative one. So the subdivision lot layouts, the roads, traffic, all, all the details, those will be assessed at a later. Public hearing with the planning commission. So, so the kind of the main considerations in tonight's decision have to do with. It's the zone's consistency with the future land use map and the general plan. Its conducive ness to the health, safety and welfare of the city. It's appropriateness and compatibility with the area serviceability and if any overlays are applicable. So with that, I'll get ready. Thanks, Alan. So you can kind of see here on the map, the general location. So this is located on the east side of the city. Just on Gardner Lane, about halfway between Redwood Road and twenty two hundred West. And we've got kind of, kind of a unique mix of residential uses. So to, actually, Alan, can we go back one slide? Perfect. Thank you. So you can kind of see here, it, well, it's a little hard to see at this scale, but. To the north and south, you've got neighborhoods, the single family homes. These lots are ranging from about ten thousand square feet to about thirteen hundred square feet, pretty much everything in between. And then to the east, you have a rural residential area that's has a lot more variety. So this has a mix of mostly single family homes, a few duplexes and even an apartment building. And then you've also got quite a range of some of the larger lots in there. So those are ranging from twelve thousand square feet to over two acres. And then to the west is currently more agricultural land. That is just farmland, a few single family homes and a church. So. Next slide, please. So looking at the surrounding zones, you've got kind of the, kind of that same mix. So you've got a mix of everything from an A one rural residential to east. And then R one ten, R one twelve, and then the R one eight zones further to the north. So the way this zone is kind of fitting in there, you can kind of see there on the map is. It's essentially somewhat. Bridging that, that zone pattern gap between the north and the south there. So you've got. R one ten to the north and R one ten to the south and then an R one eight further to the north. So it's, it's kind of following that pattern from north to south there. And then going back to the point of overlay districts, there's, there's no overlay districts in this area. In fact, there's not even any floating, floating overlay districts that would apply here. So it's, it's really just pretty standard. And then with the low density residential land use pattern. So that. The general plan gives a range of basically the different zones that can be approved with that land use designation. Those range from R one eight, R one nine, R one ten, PC and PRD zones. And so we, we created this density table just to kind of show how that would fit in this neighborhood. So. With the density range that's given in the general plan, that ranges from three point one dwelling units per acre to five point oh dwelling units per acre. And so the proposed, or at least with an R one eight zone. Based loosely on the concept plan, we'd be getting about three point four dwelling units per acre in this area. So. So it's kind of on the lower end of that density range. But in comparison to, to some of the surrounding areas there. Just kind of depending on how you look at it, again, that north to south pattern. Kind of shows more of the, a little bit higher density than what's to the east and the west there. Next slide.
Actually, we got, we got a line. Are you ready for questions or?
I'm almost done.
Let's give them another thirty seconds, then we'll go to questions or another, however.
Perfect. I'll wrap it up. So just going over the planning commission meeting. So the planning commission gave a positive recommendation with six commissioners in favor, with none unopposed. And then one commissioner was absent from that. So. That's pretty much it and I can answer any questions.
Now we'll go to questions. Councilmember Whitelock had her light on first.
Thank you. Mr. Forsyth, I know that we have residents here that are interested in this development and. I'm not sure that they know what that C means. So if you would define that. And then we had a resident ask about how nineteen fifty would be going out and if you would address that, please.
Okay. Yeah. So like I was saying, the decision tonight is specifically on the rezone. So we're not looking at road patterns. We're not looking at traffic. All of that will be addressed at a later hearing. During the planning commission.
So, Councilmember Green. I, I know where you're going. So a couple of things. I know where Councilmember Whitelock's going is that. We have changed our ordinance that requires the concept plan to be part of the zoning. So that there's a concept and, 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 and I, I think that's part of the ordinance and. And to, I think we need to put up the concept plan so the residents can see. Is that where you're going, Councilmember Whitelock?
Of that and it already tells us in our packet how they plan to put a road through there. So I don't know why we can't answer that. And certainly we can define what a C is. It's a certain square footage home, that's all.
Mr. Langford, let's.
So my question real quick is, can we show the map of, I've got it in the packet. Do we have that map in your presentation of how the houses are going to be laid out?
I don't have it in the presentation, no. I do have it in the packet.
Let's let Scott.
So regarding your question, Councilmember Whitelock of the, the C, that's actually an old. Holdout portion of our code that needs to be updated. The, the state law has changed. It refers to minimum house sizes. And per new legislation at the state level, we, we don't have the authority to enforce that portion. So.
I understand that, but that is what was just presented. So maybe that shouldn't be presented that way, right?
It's an R one eight zone.
Exactly. The C should not be there because then questions come up.
Fair enough.
All right. Question for, I have just one real quick question because what Councilmember Green mentioned, I wasn't sure if that was right. And so I wanted to just double check. Do we now require concept plans on even Euclidean zones? I thought those were only required for planned community zones.
As far as I know, they're, they're still part of our checklist, so we do request them. I'm not exactly sure if we require them by ordinance or not. I'd have to check on that, but. Generally, the concept plan is.
It's not binding at this stage.
Right. Yeah. In some, in some instances where we do have rezones involving like a master development plan or master development agreement, then a concept plan would be.
Right.
Beneficial because there's more detail to that. But with this being just a Euclidean zone, there's really nothing binding that specific, if that makes sense.
Gotcha. Councilmember Green's lights on. Going back to the one chart, what's the difference between the gross density and the net density that?
Yeah, so I can explain that. So the gross density is dealing just with the, the number of units within that zone. Divided by the total acreage of that zone without accounting for non-residential uses, roads, things like that. And so, so the net density is the opposite of that, where you're taking the total number of residential units. And dividing that by the acreage of residential land, if that makes sense.
Okay. Good answer, good answer. Any other questions for staff before we turn this open to the public? All right. Or did we want to, do we get the? Right, right. Okay, I think we're, we're fairly clear in what we're doing. Let's have, let's open the public hearing, then we'll have the developer have an opportunity to answer any. Concerns that might be brought up at that point along with staff. So let's go to the public hearing. This is your opportunity to weigh in on this issue now. We did have one already. And anybody else then who would like to address the council on this issue, you have three minutes. I will ask you to give us your name. Obviously it's pertinent to us if you live in the area or not. You don't have to give us your exact address, but just, you know, West Jordan resident, whatever. You have three minutes and again, we don't do a back and forth. If you have questions, go ahead and pose them, but we'll have a staff answer your question. Afterwards, you know, we have staff here who, who can talk specifics. Again, just, just to kind of put this into, into perspective, this is a big issue. Kind of a thirty thousand foot zoning level. It's not necessarily, you know, where the sewer line runs. Through this neighborhood. That's not what we're talking about. We're just talking about should houses be here? Or should this be an empty field? That's kind of the decision that's, that's before us tonight. And the size of the lot is eight thousand minimum square feet. So we'll go ahead and open that up. Public, anybody who'd like to address the council, just come on up and give us your name. And you'll have three minutes. There's a timer on the screen up here that'll count down so you know.
My name is Jana Pierce, and I live directly, my house, my backyard is directly in front of this field that we're talking about. So like he mentioned, most of the houses around there are larger-sized lots, including all of the ones along that fence. So I would like to see that the lots remain larger lots. That's what we were told when our homes were built, that those homes would be larger. And also, I would like to know if the builder plans to build a fence to keep the dust down as well as the rodents, or if... Yeah, how that will be addressed.
Okay, great, thank you. Anybody else would like to address the council? You actually had your three minutes on this already, but, but the staff is still willing to talk to you, so go ahead and grab, grab one of them. Just grab one, grab Scott or, or Mark. Anybody else who'd like to come up and address the council on this? You're allowed to do it, even if you came last meeting, and when we said that, you know, when we said come back, and you came back, that'd be great.
My name is Jen Sorensen. I live at the second house from the north end of this property that's being developed on 1950 West. I do want to request, with what I've heard tonight, I do think it's very important that you know, when they put in the plan, what houses they're putting in, because that will make your decision on whether it's an R18 or larger. The problem with the R18 that's going in, if you approve it tonight, is there's 53 homes that would be going in. That's a minimum of 106 vehicles that are going to be in that neighborhood. And the outlet, yes, there's one on Gardner, but most of them, if you look at the map, if you bring that map back up, there's 1950 West, but the majority of the homes go into a circle. They will be exiting two houses down from, or one house down from me, and from what I understand from the builder, they think they're going to make a sharp right turn and head south to Gardner, and go out to Bengeter, or out to 22nd. We're human, we're going to take the, the path less hard for us, and those 106 cars, most of them are going to head north on 1950 West, adding all of that traffic with all of our little kids. So I would ask that you not pass an R18, because in the long run, which you'll be dealing with later, you're adding a minimum of 106 vehicles. I know my house is different than most. I have three generations living in my home. I have six vehicles at my home. So how many of those new homes are going to have anywhere from two to six vehicles, adding traffic heading north with the proposed plan that's on there for the R18? So I would beg that you not allow the R18, and allow all of that traffic heading north if you look at that map. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council on this one?
My name's Burnell Kirkman. I'm an adjoining property owner, and coincidentally have been involved in and around MacArthur and the work that John's done over the several years. I've driven through his community, I've been part of building some of those communities. As far as a builder goes, this would be a first choice for me. As far as the size of the zoning, the 8,000 square foot, something needs to be done for the affordability for our kids. I've driven through those communities. The difference between 8,000 and 12,000, in my opinion, isn't huge, but it's a big deal when we're trying to afford, afford houses for our kids. I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kristi Anson, and I live in the same neighborhood, just across the street from Jana, actually. On the map, you had two areas that were red for the smaller lots, and then our area is orange for slightly bigger lots, and then there's a whole, the yellow lots, and the homes west of Gardner Lane are all much larger too, their lot sizes. So I think they should at least be a fifth acre. At .18, you're not there yet. Personally, I'd prefer a quarter acre. As for affordability, you have homes, because I've driven through the little neighborhood on Redwood, north of our neighborhood, and those lots are less than 5,000 square feet, and those start at $530,000. Homes are not affordable at all. We don't want point, or 8,000 square foot lots there. Also, 1950 shouldn't go through. I've heard it said before, on the master plan, you have the start of a road, because I've driven on it, just a little bit off of 2200 West that started, they've started it, there's a red brick house, between the red brick house and the church, there's a road started, and it stops at a field. But if, my husband and I drove it for the last meeting, we went and drove to that location. The farmer hasn't plowed that area of the field if the road continued on. He plowed the rest of it on the left and the right, but not that section. So I'm assuming you could turn that into a road too. So please do not let 1950 go through, it's going to be insane, because my neighbor's right, the cars will go out to Sugar Factory, because there's a light there. So unless you're going to put a light at Gardner Lane, if you have anybody trying to go north on Redwood, they're going to go to Sugar Factory, which takes them right through our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to address the, the council on this?
Mayor and city council, I also live within the subdivision. My name is Chad Mainz. In regard to, that, that is, my major concern is the traffic flow, and would request, well, first and foremost, I want to have someone address the question of public zoning notices. And the only people that were notified is if you lived within 300 feet of that place. And it affects us all on 1950, the access 1950 to leave the subdivision. I would like to see that changed, so that the public, from now on, I know it was changed two years ago, apparently, by someone in the city. I don't know what the state boundaries are, but my experience in 50 years is that zoning changes need to be public noticed. There was never a public notice posted on that property, only given to the people that lived within 300 feet. Secondly, if in fact, they pass this zoning, I would like to see more speed bumps. I frequented a street right over just off of 70th South. I had to cross four speed bumps to go down the length of 1950 currently, to get to the house I was going to. So I don't see that there would be any problem putting in additional speed bumps on 1950. Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody's alarm just went off. Somebody's out of time. Anybody else who'd like to address the council? You, you still have a chance. Come on.
Counsel, thank you. My name is Jeff Bigelow.
There you go, you should be good.
My name is Jeff Bigelow. I live within the subdivision that is being discussed at length this evening. I've lived in that subdivision nearly 30 years. To address the, the one individual who lives in the subdivision the size of the lots, I live on an 8,000 square foot lot. I've lived there for 30 years, I've torn out both side yards because I didn't want grass. So as far as livability and size, I don't feel that that should be a matter. I don't feel that that is even an issue. As far as the, the purchase of the land, it's already been approved. These houses going in are basically the same size lot I live on. It's not going to be a difference as far as what I've lived on for 30 years raising the family, and what I see happening. With regard to Mr. Mainz, who is a neighbor, his address and his concerns are a valid concern with regard to 1950. Many neighbors in the neighborhood have basically thrown me under a bus, and have accused me for profiteering, being friends with MacArthur Homes. I can see that that can take place in future planning meetings, as far as having speed bumps and other things that calm the fact of the concerns that people are going to feel that there's going to be racetracks and racing going down 1950. I live on an oval in the old part of the subdivision. Just last weekend, I had older men on minibikes and a car with a camera equipped to the front hood racing around my oval. Been there 30 years, I've seen it for 30 years, so I haven't addressed that. I haven't brought that up, and that's what everybody is feeling is going to happen on 1950. It already is. I've seen it for 30 years. That's why the speed bumps were put in, to address that issue and to slow the traffic. But yet, I don't see speed bumps in my oval, which I'm not requesting, but yet I see racing all the time. With regard to the traffic flow, a study has been done. Most of the traffic has been found would be going out to Gardner Lane. To address those who have made comment, I was told the city is going to plan on putting a stoplight at Redwood Road and Gardner Lane. I've also had many neighbors say that, oh, that'd be a convenient out to go through that new part of the subdivision and take their children to Westville Elementary. Now that means they're going to be going through the new part of the subdivision that is proposed, and going up to Westville Elementary, and not going out to Sugar Factory Road. So as far as traffic, you're going to have a hit and miss with regard to that. I think most of the traffic is going to go out to Gardner Lane specifically, because going to point south, you would have a stoplight eventually at Redwood Road, you would have Smith Food King, you have the elementary where everybody's going to be going. I don't think Sugar Factory is going to be overwhelmed and inundated with more traffic for the simple fact that there's nothing really going that way unless you're going to Salt Lake to work like I do. So I thank you for your time, and support the community with MacArthur Homes going in.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to, to address the council who's here in the room? All right, going once, going twice. Yeah, let's check online and see if there's anybody on the Zoom.
Yeah, looking at the attendee, attendee list on Zoom, I see no one raising their hand.
All right. All right, seeing no further comment, then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll bring this back to the, to the council. I'd like to invite the developer, is there a representative from MacArthur Homes here? John Gassman? Sweet. Let's give you a minute, if you want to just address a couple of concerns and give us your, your thoughts.
Well, I don't know that I have a lot to add, other than what Mr. Forsyth has told you. I would kind of repeat some of the things I mentioned to the planning commission. You know, MacArthur Homes has been around for over 30 years in Utah. Some of you may or may not be familiar with Macarthur's. Over those years, well, and I've been with Macarthur's, I'm in my 29th year now, actually, been from a long time. My very first job with MacArthur Homes was building homes on 22nd West, and what is that, just north of 90th, the Link subdivision. We built homes in there, just around the corner from the project we're talking about. We've done over 700 lots and/or homes for families in Utah, and yes, affordability is an issue. I agree with you. You look at that and say affordability, how do you call that affordable? But that's the state we're at in, in Salt Lake Valley. It's, it's crazy. We've, MacArthur Homes is typically built in the southern end of Salt Lake County, northern end of Utah County. We are now as far away, I'm just, I just this week broke ground on a development in Weber County, in West Ogden, and we're now down in Pason. That's how far we're having to go to find affordable ground. My oldest daughter and her husband, just, I just got them into a townhome, and I agree with what has some of it been said, I don't know how these kids are going to afford homes. Had my daughter not had a dad that was a builder to get her into a townhome, I don't know. So are these going to be entry-level homes? They're not. Do we call those affordable? I, I don't know, you know, MacArthur has typically been an entry-level, first-time-move-up builder, and that's what we see probably going in here, is probably first or second-time-move-up type homes going in. I will tell you that over the years, two of the subdivisions that are probably most similar to what we're talking about tonight are Bateman Farms, which is on 70th South and 13th West, which we did 20 years ago, when, when the Batemans moved their dairy farm down to Levan. We bought that ground and put, I don't remember the total number, about 70 lots in there, I think, 79, something like that. And then Boulder Ranch, which we just finished out on 90th, we just finished that a couple of years ago. Exact same zoning, it was, it's R18 zoning, go drive through there, see the type of homes we're putting in there. We didn't build all the homes in there, we sold some to Dakota and Hamlet Homes. But it's a great-looking subdivision, and that's similar product that we're talking about here tonight. So I will, Mr. Forsyth mentioned, you know, master plan, the concept that we've proposed is exactly that, it's a concept. Early on, we've talked, you know, in talking to the traffic engineers and your city planning department, we know there's going to be, having to be traffic calming features. We're not here to, you know, undermine the residents of West Jordan City, we want to add families to West Jordan City. We're not trying to, to change the master plan, what we're doing fits within that master plan, fits within that low-density zone. Yes, we're, we've got the cart a little bit before the horse, we've already had a traffic study done by Focus Engineering, the three main impacted intersections, the one right at 22nd West, and then the one out in front of where we will be, kind of by Okubo there, and then the other one that's most impacted will be out on Redwood. The two, well, two of those three are at acceptable levels of service right now, and will be with the addition of the homes we're proposing. The intersection at Redwood Road is currently at a failing level of service, and still will be when we add more homes. But it's my understanding that that is on the docket to add that light at that intersection, and at that point, it will accommodate, easily accommodate what we're proposing. So again, we're not looking to undermine what anybody, any, any little shangri-la anybody has in the, in the area, we want to add to that. We'll increase values, we want to build a quality, affordable home for West Jordan families. That's all I've got.
Wonderful. Any questions for the developer? Let's go to Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you. If you've built with them for a while, perhaps you can answer the question for the one resident as far as, with the existing homes, will you put up some kind of fence or barrier at, prior to construction, will you put up the construction barrier? What will you do to try to minimize dust and rodents going into their yard?
So prior to construction, many of you are familiar with this process, some of the residents may not be, the, there's a lot of environmental protections that have to take place, most of it involving stormwater pollution prevention, right? Part of that is making sure you don't have any runoff, there's what's called a fugitive dust control plan that has to be filed. We're not, we will put up, there's a chance we will put up some type of, let's call it a silt fence or waddles to prevent any stormwater from running off the property. No offense, we put up is going to eliminate dust. There are measures taken during construction to keep the dust down and minimize the impact. We realize there will be some, that's the nature of, of new development. Again, a vinyl fence isn't going to keep mice out, but we'll, again, we want to be good neighbors, we want to participate, what time, in terms of what kind of fencing will go up where? Again, that's part of the, the subdivision design, which is the next step, if and when we get the zoning approved, so.
A couple more...
Let me, let me tell, sorry to interrupt. I have had one neighbor to the east approach me, concerned about, on Schulson Lane, they have horses, they're concerned about, not their horses, but the safety of any kids, you're right, the moving into the subdivision, and keeping them separate from those horses, duly noted, and, and we'll, we'll factor that in as we, as we move forward with our design, working with city staff.
Wonderful. Two additional questions, and don't feel picked on, I plan to ask this of everybody that comes in from now on. Are you planning to build these, as, are you, you're planning to develop the land, are you planning to build the homes as well? And are you planning to sell them to owners, or are you planning that they'll be our rental homes?
So to answer the question, number one is, right now, our plan is, MacArthur Homes will be building these homes. We need, we're thrilled to be in such a, our office is just a stone's throw down, just across the border in South Jordan. It's been a long time since we've had a subdivision this close to home, so we're, we're thrilled, and we, we're doing this so we can have homes to build. I have people to, to employ, and we want to build the homes. Rentals, we, we are, we're not planning on putting anything in place to control rentals. We don't anticipate that with this price point of home, just so you know, we're, we're estimating right now that price point is going to be in the high 800s, starting in the high 800s, depending on what options people have. Typically, those aren't built as rental properties. So we have, I will tell you, we have considered doing some new floor plans, incorporating some ADUs. You know, the state is really pushing that as a way to get some more affordable housing. So an ADU is an auxiliary dwelling unit, which may be a, a separate unit over the garage or in the basement that has its own dedicated entrance, right? But I don't see that being a big, certainly not being a lion's share of the homes that we, but we've considered developing a couple floor plans to offer that, if that's attractive to buyers, as it helps them make the home more affordable. That, that can be factored in when, when the banks are determining whether they issue them or not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lamb.
Great, thank you. I think my, two quick questions, so, and what she brought up was, in a previous council that I wasn't on, they approved a whole subdivision like this, and then the owner of... the owner went around, turned around and sold it to a company that just turned them into rentals. So I think what we're asking is if we approve this, and later on when you go through the next approvals, is that MacArthur Homes doesn't turn this into fifty rental homes. We want them to be single-family homes. So I think that's what she was trying to
I, I understand.
I know we can't stop that, but at the same time, that's our hope is that MacArthur Homes is building single-family homes for new families and not rentals. And then the second thing I had, usually these are done in phases. Do you foresee doing like phase one, phase two, like near the front, near the back? Because one of the questions was, you know, it's gonna be up against someone's homes. Are you gonna start at the back lots, or do you think you'll start at the front lots? How does that usually happen with MacArthur?
No, good, good questions. So in terms of your first question, all I can do is stand here and give you my word that as of this date, John Gassman from MacArthur Homes can tell you, our intent is to go build single-family homes, and if you want, again, the best comparison, go drive through, drive through Boulder Ranch out on Ninetieth South and Mountain View Corridor, that's that's what we anticipate building here. So that's the best I can do for you. Um, in terms of phasing, we are gonna design it in two phases. Um, it will be split kind of, um, north-south. Uh, again, at this point, it's a concept, right? But our concept is that nineteen fifty west would go through there, and that would be phase one. Everything else on the west side and that, kind of that triangular shape would be the second phase. Um, we're gonna design it in two phases. Whether we build it in two phases, um, again, that's if we stick with that design, right? Um, kinda depends on a couple of things. Number one is the, the seller. Uh, many of you may know this land belonged to Stephen Pearson. It's now in the, in the custody of his trust, which is his two grown daughters. One of which is Emily Sosa. Um, she and her husband actually peeled off that little one acre you see if you're looking at that concept in the southeast corner. A few years ago, they peeled off that one acre with the intent of doing three third-acre lots in the future. Part of our contract with them is to help them facilitate that. That's why this rezone includes their parcel tonight. So, um, one of their three lots would come off of the new street, the other two front uh, Gardner Lane. They are already building a home on one of those two lots, what will be, what will eventually be lots, right? So, uh, I, I tell you all that because, um, the Sosa family is, is looking to find their replacement for this nice piece of property. They wanna go somewhere, somewhere rural, find a replacement for it. And so how we take down the land in that purchase will kind of depend on if the Sosa family, the Sosa half of the Pearson daughters, um, has found their replacement parcel of land. If not, by the time we're ready to close on it, then we'll just take down the land necessary to do the first phase to allow them time to continue their search. If, uh, in fact, we, um, both daughters, Heather, Heather Moore is the other daughter, and Emily Sosa and their families uh, are ready to close the whole thing at once, then it's likely that we'll develop it all at once. The other factor will be honestly the economy and what the housing market is doing. If it's dead, we're not gonna go put in, you know, fifty lots if we don't need to. I would, I would hope that you know, rates come down and home price or, and, uh, home sales can go back up and we can go do it all at once, but that, that's what I would like to do, but that remains to be seen. Hope that answered your question.
Wonderful. Anything further for the developer? All right, uh, counsel for discussion and a motion. Uh, Councilmember Green. So you're, you're, you're good. Just a couple of things for, uh, the residents, so you know where my rationale is gonna be when I vote on this thing. R-one-eight's a good zone. I live in an R-one-eight, then Councilmember Lamb lives in an R-one-eight. It better be R-one-eight. Uh, although my house is, my house is on a bigger lot than R-one-eight. It's interest, it's interesting. I live in an R-one-eight and I've got a bigger lot, but then we won't go there. We have some serious issues in this state. We have a, a housing crisis. And this, this is the kind of development that we want in the city that can help with the housing crisis, but doesn't make things worse. MacArthur Homes wants to zone this R-one-eight. It's if we were sitting here talking about a planned residential uni, planned residential development unit or project that had twelve units an acre, that's what the legislature wants. Legislature wants, well, legislature actually considered by right zoning on anything to have at least five units an acre, and they were talking eight units an acre last fall, if I remember right. I see city attorney nodding his head, so I, I'm not too far off. Eight units an acre is, you can do the math and you can see how small those units would be. They would be fifty-five hundred, six thousand, so I'm gonna take it as a win that we've got, uh, MacArthur wanting to come in and do R-one-eight. Uh, I don't wanna give the legislature an excuse why we're not approving a four-and-a-half, five-unit-per-acre development and, uh, when it's proposed. Uh, I know there's probably some people out there that don't want it developed at all. You know? Probably not the, the, the case in a current environment. For those of you that wanna do the math, you can figure out, I don't know what the price of this is, but I do know that the going price for uh, raw land in this valley is going anywhere between three hundred and fifty and five hundred thousand dollars an acre. So you can do, am I right? I see, I see Mr. Gassman's head. Yeah, and so, uh, you, you can figure out what kind of land deal, what this land deal is worth. Uh, and, and, uh, that's why people wanna sell their land. Um, to address a couple of issues. We understand the concern about nineteen fifty. Trust me, I understand that concern. Um, luckily, the way that, the way that it has to work to avoid the Sosa house, it has to curve. That's automatically a built-in traffic calming measure. But what I'm gonna sit here and I'm gonna be adamant about the staff and to, uh, to, to the administrative staff is you can use the current development process to ensure that there are traffic calming measures on this street. And the fact is, is that nineteen fifty west already has a traffic study done, so we don't have to do a new, another one 'cause we're just extending the road. To those, to those neighbors who think the traffic bumps are the speed, are the end-all, the traffic calming measures, they're the worst traffic calming measure that you can have. They're terrible. Um, they're expensive to maintain in a lot of ways. They get ripped up. Snowplow drivers hate them. The fire trucks hate them. Everybody hates bumps. But there are things that we can do. Um, and, and so I'm gonna ask Mr. Gassman with MacArthur to work with our staff, particularly where nineteen fifty meets. Um, it'd be nice to have, uh, maybe a traffic safety measure there, uh, that helps shorten crosswalks, get people across streets. Uh, it would be nice to have something further down the block besides the, the curve and the bend, just to help slow traffic down. And so please incorporate those into the design of the neighborhood. We can't impose that condition uh, because of the way that the law is written. I wish we could, 'cause I, I would, I would. Uh, but given that it's an R-one-eight rezone, we can't. Uh, but I, I just, but, but we are concerned about the traffic. Um, we understand what it means to connect roads um, and have them go through. Uh, and, and we get it. Trust me, we get it. We all live on the same city streets that you do. Even my circle gets weird traffic every now and then that I shake my head and wonder, where did those cars from and what did they do? Tried to leave the neighborhood and had to use the circle? So, uh, yeah, that, so those are the rationale on, uh, is that this is a simple rezone. We could have had a development that was a whole lot worse. Uh, trust me, uh, sitting on the planning commission for four years and sitting on this council for four years, I've seen worse developments that wanna get put into a neighborhood. And frankly, this is gonna, I think this one will be a, a good one. Um, at least I'm hoping it's a good one. Uh, generally, R-one-eights are a decent neighborhood, are a decent-sized home on a neighborhood. And so, uh, I hope you appreciate that, and thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Chair. Um, when I first heard this was opening up, um, my biggest worry was townhomes. There's gonna be hundreds of townhomes proposed on this, and so I was actually encouraged when I saw that there was an R-one-eight zone. Um, like Councilmember Green said, I do live in an R-one-eight. Uh, my home is modest. Um, it's not an eight-hundred, eight-hundred thousand dollar home, so I will say the affordability kind of uh, went out the window for me tonight as far as this goes, but I'm not gonna be buying a house there. Someone else will be buying that house. Um, I actually joined, not joined, but I actually ran for office six years ago because there was a piece of land near thirteen hundred west that became a big apartment complex, and it is an apartment complex today. Um, when I went with several of our neighbors to fight it, uh, we were told, well, they event, they were going to put townhomes on that land previously, and the neighbors fought the townhomes. And now those townhomes are a big apartment complex that not, it's not as bad as we thought it would be, but it's still an apartment complex. So as far as zoning tonight, I'm glad it's an R-one-eight versus an apartment complex or townhomes, and even to come before us recently, in the past few years, I call them row homes, which are homes that have garage, living room, and then a third story for bedrooms. So I don't foresee any of these being three-star homes. Uh, I'm sure there'll be some two, probably most will be, uh, ramblers, but um, as far as that goes, the R-one-eight fits into this better, and I fear that if we don't put an R-one-eight in, it could be a worse use later on if another developer comes through. Thanks.
Councilmember Bedore.
Uh, yeah, this is, uh, obviously a, a tough one for me because this is the district that I'm in, and I'm sure many of you looking at me, those of you that voted for me, um, wondering what I'm gonna do, and, um, so this is tough. This is my first time to have to do something like this. But I do need to bring up very quickly that I had, uh, I had two emails, which on the council, no means many. Um, talk to me and, because not a lot of people speak up. Um, and they use the phrase, put yourself in my shoes. And I had to think about that, and I said, well, okay. My two homes I had previously to where I'm living right now, one of them in West Jordan, were both lots that faced, the backyard was nothing for miles and miles. Both of those homes. One of them on an area where the road had gone through a little bit and ended. And we used to do three-on-three neighborhood basketball tournaments there for about a year and a half. But we always knew that that was gonna go through. We always knew houses were coming, and eventually they came. Same with my home on basically fifty-six hundred west in West Jordan. Nothing behind me. My dogs could run forever. Now it's houses forever, but I always knew they were coming. I got, uh, married recently, moved into this district into my wife's home so that my children could have my other home because they can't afford to buy a home. And I am in what is basically an R, an R-eight. And, um, but I need to tell you, it's actually an R-two, which means it's a duplex on that property. So I live in a home, basically two homes smashed together in the area that some of you are saying is too small. When I got married, I didn't realize I would be living with my in-laws. So it was me, my in-laws, and my youngest child, and my wife. Next to us, seven people live in the duplex next to us. Five young children. We get along. We do it just fine. I live right next to twenty-two hundred west. I walk that every single day with my dog, multiple times. That is a racetrack. Not only a racetrack, but a racetrack with semis going down all the time. That's what I deal with. And there's no chance to put a speed bump on twenty-two hundred 'cause it's basically the Redwood Road to the west. I live on Fairway Drive, which when people don't wanna go to the school because there's people there, they cut through my neighborhood and around through the golf, to the, uh, around the, the golf course. So that they don't have to deal with that. So I deal with traffic every morning. And that's going on, and I deal with a lot of it around three o'clock. What I'm trying to say is I'm in your shoes. I've been in your shoes, and in many respects, I'm in smaller shoes. But I will tell you that I used to spend my life a while back, if you remember a book called Who Moved My Cheese? I used to be the guy that went around all over the country and talked about that book to companies. That was all about having to deal with change. And I felt like I was just a grief counselor, going to talk to companies, telling employees why they have to deal with whatever crap the the company just forced on them. So I learned that sometimes you just have to see the change was coming all along. Now, the change that's coming with an R-one-eight is better, as Councilmember Lamb said, and also Councilmember Green has said, than what the legislature would want us to have. I have to be responsible in this city. And if I say no to this, legislature starts looking at that and going, we need to be stronger in the cities, and we need to start forcing them more on what they can and can't do. And pretty soon we will get more high-density housing in there. So what I can say is that I understand. I do need to point out what we're voting on tonight is about rezoning. We're not voting on what's all gonna be in there. And I will tell you that I will be in your corner and can be there to talk when we talked to the mayor and the staff, and when MacArthur Home was talking, I can be there with you, the residents, making sure that we're getting the best we can. That we get a light on Gardner. But this is about rezoning. And so whether, obviously you can see where my vote's gonna go, whether or not that makes you regret a vote you may have given me or not, I have to do what's responsible for this city. And what's responsible is that we have a good rezoning in that area, and then that we do everything we can to make sure that this is safe for everyone in it. And that, I can tell you, is something we will still do after the rezoning and the plans are put into place.
Thank you. I just wanna, um, make one quick comment, and, and Councilmember Bedore touched on this already. And that is, we're talking about the zone tonight. We're not talking about the subdivision. We're not talking about the site plan. Um, I mentioned a little bit earlier, we're not talking about, you know, where the sewer, the pipes, where the roads are even. Um, all of that comes into the planning commission on a subdivision plan. So there's another public hearing, and you'll get the details, whether this concept plan is exactly what we see when they come to subdivide, or whether it's tweaked, or whether it's completely different. Um, we don't know. All we know is that tonight we're approving that the lots have to be at least eight thousand square feet. They have to have certain setbacks, uh, you know, from side yards and front yard to backyard, have to be a certain depth. Um, and, and the covenants and things that go with that. That is all we're talking about tonight. Um, is just the minimums of what can be there. So it's, it's not a, uh, we're not as in the weeds as we like to get, and sometimes we like to get really in the weeds, and this is a this is my favorite kind of rezone because we're not in the weeds. We just have to, we look at it from a thirty-thousand-foot level and, and that's it. So, um, yeah, that's just, that's all I wanted to say tonight. Um, I appreciate some of the comments that have already been made.
I was gonna make, make a most
Okay, let's go to Councilmember Whitelock then first.
Thank you.
Can you angle your mic just a little bit closer? Because a lot of people are having a hard time hearing you.
Thank you. Um, okay. Can you hear me now? Um, since, since most of us have shared our opinion, I was mainly asking questions prior. So here's where I'm at. I agree that R-one-eight is the right zone for here. Um, but where I struggle is that I don't often see the planning commission go against what staff says. I don't often see them bring up alternatives. And it concerns me. It concerns me that we're not going to get the traffic calming measures that we need. Now, we are a political subdivision of the state, which I've had a legislator nearly beat that into my head when I bring up things, and I understand that. But what I felt happy about is when I heard, um, the mayor invited us to a meeting and the governor spoke, and I was grateful to finally hear the governor saying, actually, what we need are single-family homes where our Utah residents can build wealth, because that's where you build wealth. that's where you build wealth. That's, that's how Americans have had a great middle class, is they've been able to afford to buy a single-family home. And while when Mr. Gassman says seven or eight hundred thousand dollars, I nearly faint. Um, I think he probably does too, because he's been in this industry for thirty years. That means he started building homes that I could afford. Here's my issue. I'm gonna see how the votes go because I think your voice matters as well. So while I feel that R one eight is the right zone, I'm your voice, and I've heard many of you say you oppose for reasons, and some of you have opposed to the zone. Most of you that have reached out, either Facebook or emails or tonight, it's traffic. And I don't usually talk to developers, but I did call Mr. Gassman and have a conversation with him about maybe he could tweak his concept a little bit, which really isn't my job, but I wanted you to have a voice. So I don't know where I'm gonna end up on this vote, but I just wanted everyone to know that's where I'm at. I agree, R one eight is the right zone. But I also believe that we live in a republic and that my job is to be your voice, to look at all the data and looking, and listen to your voice as well.
Councilmember Green.
I'm going to move to, and, and, and Ms. Quick, I already emailed you the motion, so uh, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-four dash seventeen, amending lines twenty-seven and lines forty-one, removing the C so that it reads only R dash one dash eight.
I'll second the motion.
Excellent. I heard you. Uh, we have a motion by Councilmember Green, and it's seconded by Councilmember Shelton. Is there discussion to the motion itself? Councilmember Lamb?
I just need more information on why we're dropping the C, if you can go into detail about that.
You, you heard what Mr. Langford said, is that we don't use the C designation at all anymore, so why would we want to uh, zone something that's not according to state law, that that's there? Let's just make it R one eight. That's what our ordinance allows. I see you shaking your head.
Mr. Chandler, if you want to, go ahead.
Yeah, I would concur with Councilmember Green's assessment on that. The C designation wouldn't be enforceable under state law at this point, so it's just fine, and, and I mean, if we left it in, it doesn't cause a problem for us, uh, but it does clarify things to remove it here, so I think it's an appropriate motion that I would support.
Yeah, and like Scott said earlier, we just need to clean up the code on that, but.
I was gonna say, uh, if that's the case, then this is another discussion. Can we look to not have that happen in a future council where we have to take that off?
Yeah. Yep. We will be looking at that. All right. Any further discussion to the motion? All right, seeing none, this is an ordinance. Let's have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Count, or Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
No.
Thank you. Our show that motion passes five to one.
Wonderful. Thank you, and thank you for coming out and having your voice heard on that. We appreciate the participation. Um, this, this form of government only works when people speak up, so I appreciate that. Uh, next item on the agenda is ordinance, uh, it's, it's item six B, ordinance twenty-four eighteen, a petition by Robbie Thompson, Utah Land Company, uh, rezoning nine point seven five acres of property from an A-five zone, agricultural zone, to an R one eight zone, which we just heard a lot about. Uh, this is at Taylor Farms, seventy-two eighteen South Temple Drive, just thirteen hundred west. We're gonna have to rename that street.
It, it's not R one eight, C?
This one just says R one eight, yeah. All right, let's go to uh, Taylor for this one. Thank you, Taylor.
I, I appreciate uh the opportunity to speak about this. Uh, as I mentioned, this is just a zone to the R one eight zone. Um, no C or no letter attached to it. Uh, here, it's just a concept, not a concept, a context map of where it is, so it's outlined in orange. Don't worry, I'm not gonna make you look at this page very long. So here is the site. It's about nine point seven five acres. Um, two acres of that currently has a vet office on it. That's kind of a little notch out. You see the other seven point, uh, seven five acres is uh, pasture land there. Uh, the current future land use designation for this property is low-density residential. Uh, as we can see on that table from the general plan, the R one eight zone is appropriate within the low-density residential, so this is not proposing any future land use amendments. Again, here's it in context. We can just see that that matches basically everything around it. Uh, at the rezone, we're going from the A-five zone, which is agricultural minimum five-acre lots to the R one eight zoned residential eight thousand square foot lots. There is no subdivision with this plan. It does comply with our general plan. It is compatible with neighboring properties. Should be noted that the vet office is a legal non-conforming use in its current um, designation at A-five. It re, will remain a legal non-conforming use if the rezone is approved or denied. Roads, lot layouts, and uh, all that type of stuff will be addressed at the subdivision stage, not at the rezone. But I have provided the concept map here so you can see how we anticipate this uh, lining up. There are a couple minor changes that will need to be made, um, namely, some of those corner lots are just under nine thousand square feet, and we actually have to bump those up to nine thousand square feet per ordinance, so uh, there will be some lot line changes uh, when this goes to planning commission, but we do show that this can meet the standards of the R one eight zone very easily. And this is just how the project kind of fits into the rest of the neighborhood. Um, it does increase connectivity in the area, which is good for uh, walking, public access, uh, fire response. But as we can see, it's not a straight path between Redwood and Thirteen. It still has curves and turns, so it's not gonna be a racetrack by any means. Um, some people might notice a little bit more traffic if they're at the end, and they're seeing some traffic come in, but we don't really anticipate this being a driver of traffic. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on March nineteenth, and they recommended approval. With that, happy to have any questions the council might have.
Any questions for our staff? Councilmember Green?
I hate non-conforming uses. So is there any way that we can make this without just going through weird gyrations? Is there any way of making this a conforming use, that, that, that hospital a conforming use?
We would have to add the vet use to one of the zones as a permitted use. It's just not a permitted use in the A-five zone or the R one eight.
Or spot zone it to something, which would not be, we don't like to do that.
The good thing about going to R one eight is eventually if they ever do want to redevelop that, then we know that the development that would come in there would be uh, the same as the surrounding neighborhood.
Right. Great, great question. Any further discussion or questions for staff before we open a public hearing on this one? Councilmember Lamb?
I have a question, and this might not be able to be answered tonight, but previously, when I moved into this, this neighborhood, I lived just south of the neighborhood. They had a school entrance to get to Heartland, and for some reason, in the past fifteen or twenty years, they closed that off and the, where that that uh, entrance used to be, which went from the field over into, I think it's called a, I can't remember what the street name is. Anyway, are we gonna be able to open that back up again, or did we deed that land over to that house? And I don't need an answer tonight, but when we do this, we might want to think about whether or not we need to open that up again, because right now, the people that are in the neighborhood take a shortcut around so that they can get to Heartland rather than having to walk clear around Thirteenth or clear around on, it's called Cali Drive. So, but we can talk about that later. I just want to get that out in the open that there used to be a school access before, and we might want to look at that as something that we need to look at again.
Wonderful. Anything else for uh, for staff? All right, seeing none, we'll go with the same uh, same format we did at the, for the last item and go to the public to start with, um, and then let the developer address any concerns after that. So if there's anybody here in the audience, in the, in the room who would like to uh, speak to this rezone request, um, again, questions will be better answered by staff, and we'll have them answer any questions, but if there's anything you want to bring up for our consideration, this would be your time to do that. Again, you'll have three minutes. There's a big blue timer on the screen there that will count down um, as you're speaking, and we just ask for your name. Anybody here would like to, like to speak to this one? Oh, it's like we got a couple. You can rock, paper, scissors for it. I'm just.
Uh, my name's Sam Croft. I uh, live on the corner of this field, and first of all, I'm not opposed to this. Uh, it's not my property, so I'd just like to put that out there. Uh, my only concern, and which uh, Mr. Jacob, you brought up earlier, this is just the rezone. I personally don't have a problem with the rezone. Um, just the uh, the map that they just brought up earlier. I'd like to see a happy median between the existing neighborhoods and the proposed new neighborhood, which you know, traffic is what everybody's concern is. There's concern on the other one. It's concern on this, and I feel like if when you're going over this, you'd take into consideration, you know, the city doesn't typically like cul-de-sacs, but I, I think that this fourteen seventy west could go down to a cul-de-sac, and the connection would be on the other on the other road, because then there's no uh, there's no straight shot, you know, and as, as the uh, man that was speaking earlier said, well, it's not a straight shot. It's not gonna increase traffic. It, it will. A little jog, it's, it's pretty well a straight through. Um, if we can find a happy median between the existing neighborhoods um, with the one connection from Thirteenth over onto Liesel Street, just in consideration when it comes up in planning, with a cul-de-sac on the other, there won't be any lot loss that I can see, and it'll be a happy median for the existing neighborhoods and the new neighborhood. So that's what I have.
Thank you. Anybody else in the, in the room like to address the council on this one? Go ahead and come on up.
Hello, my name is Debbie Refferman, and my son and I live with the back of our house facing the north boundary of this property, and I've been there for about twelve years. Certainly, the, the open area was a big attraction in the original purchase, but of course, we understand the property owner has the rights. Um, my thoughts are so tied to the high density that is existing right now on West Jordan, and no matter what the other zonings are happening, if you look around this property, every, every home is small lot, small home. The, the streets are hurtily worn because they carry so much traffic. And I guess I, I'm sitting back and saying, okay, this is probably one of the premier developmental, uh, development lots in, in all of West Jordan, and I'd just like to see the city as the next time we get together, we're looking at site plans, to get some green space into this development. Now, I do understand from talking with your city person that five thousand dollars for every homeowner that builds a home in there is required to pay five thousand dollars towards park support, but all of that support goes to existing parks. The problem is that there aren't existing parks around this area. There isn't enough green space around this area. And I hope that as you look at developing this, that maybe it's worthwhile if it develop, if we can get a developer to fund the land and the development of a park, that maybe the city parks department can look at the maintenance um, and, and any kind of manning um, of, of personnel, just because it's really needed in the area. And if you can get a good portion of it funded by a developer, which a lot of communities are able to do with such a prime parcel, it's a good outcome for everyone. I don't think HOAs are a good way to approach the, the funding of it. I think it's just problematic, and I certainly think that it's worthy of the Parks Department to maintain a, a well-sided park. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent points being made tonight. Anybody else want to address the council on this one? Go ahead and come on up.
Hi, my name's Lynn. I live on Cali Drive. Um, my concern is that these are just single-family homes that aren't a thousand feet tall.
They will not be a thousand feet tall, guaranteed.
I mean, like, how tall are they? Are they gonna be like the ones down Redwood Road that are way tall and squished together?
That'll be a question actually further down the road, but um, yeah.
That's my concern is just.
One and two-story homes is what we're. Thirty-five feet is the maximum height for the zone.
Just tall?
So just a, just the two stories like are surrounding it right now. It's not gonna be any higher than the current two-story homes that are on all sides.
Okay, I like the park idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further uh, comments for this one tonight? Go ahead and come on up.
I'm Jeremy Brewster. I live a couple houses away from Sam. Uh, I have nothing against this property being rezoned. I would actually like to own a home over there, but I do have an issue with the way the traffic flow is going to be. I know you're not, you say you're not doing anything about that to them tonight, but you're showing pictures of what it's actually going to be. You say you live in the neighborhood. You're familiar with it. Bora Bora comes down, comes over to Erickson Park. My son was involved in a head-on collision right there where it comes into Erickson Park Drive. Cali goes down. It goes out to Thirteenth West, and you can also turn and go west to Redwood Road. There was a fourteen-year-old boy that was killed at the top of Erickson Park at Redwood Road from all the traffic that's coming down through there. I, I mean, you say you want to look at traffic. You say you, you're concerned about that. I don't really see where anything happens with that. I feel like you're just, you're up here listening, giving me what I want to hear to get me out the door, and then we're done. And I, I mean, really, there's, you're going, there's people racing up and down that street. I've got neighbors right now that actually live right there, and they're probably doing thirty miles an hour, and I'm right at the end of that road. They're probably doing thirty right there when they go into their driveway before they slow down. I mean, it's, it's, it's going to be a racetrack. It's going to cause issues for everyone in that area. I don't know why, if, if everyone isn't notified on Erickson Park when this goes through, I, everyone on that street is going to affect. Why is it only three hundred feet away, as I was hearing earlier, that ha, gets notified that this is happening? That, that's my concern. Like I said, a cul-de-sac, I'd like to buy a home. Not a cul-de-sac, my home's going up for sale. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead and come on up.
Hi, my name's Jacob Barnes. Just on the north of this uh, new development. Um, first, I'd like to say I appreciate that this is gonna be minimum eight thousand square foot lots, so I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into making that possible. Um, I guess my concern question is that uh, before I moved in the neighborhood, I've understood there's been huge problems with uh, um, floodwaters coming through and stuff like that, like people's basements have been flooded and all that. Um, e, even from time to time now, um, sorry. There, there's kind of makeshift uh, canals or whatever and going through in the backyard, and I was like, probably natural waterways and stuff like that. From time to time, you know, my yard can get pretty swamped up and stuff like that, just more uh, I guess, question, concern as to uh, stormwater mitigation or like water management of the lands in general, so I don't know if I, not necessarily asking question, but uh, more of a concern of mine in the future, so. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? And great participation tonight. I thought Nate was getting up to talk, or uh, Greg was getting up to talk to us. Um, I know, I just said anybody else when he stood up. Um, all right, I'm not seeing anybody else in the room, but um, go ahead and close the public hearing. Oh.
There is one online. Chris McConaughey would like to address the council.
Of course he would. Just kidding. Tell Chris, no. Okay, let's go. You should be free to speak. Chris, go ahead.
All right. Well, Chris McConaughey, West Jordan resident. Want to speak in favor of this one. The developer is asking something that's incredibly reasonable if it's with the surrounding area and will help with a number of other issues, as was mentioned, some of the irrigation flooding. I would definitely encourage the planning commission and staff as it goes into further development to make sure that there's nothing that would be counterproductive, but that's a little bit further down the line as far as the rezone goes. This looks really good. Thanks to the developer for pitching something reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. I second that comment. All right, seeing no other public comment in the room, unless anybody wants to rush the mic right now? All right, seeing no other public comment, nobody else online, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period and bring this, oh, we can have the developers developer in the room. We got Robbie Thompson. Yeah, come on up and if you have any comments or you want to address any of the concerns that were raised.
You and Bob have suit coats on, so
I'm about to take mine off.
Is really, I'm surprised you lasted this long. I don't have a lot more to add. I'm here representing the family. I'm not the developer. I do a bunch of development. So a little bit different process. I am here to just to protect the property owners' rights, try to rezone it, get to the highest and best use, then we'll take it to the market, and then we'll pick a home builder to build the units. So that's the process. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. It's pretty straightforward. It's an R one eight. I would have loved to do an R one six, but that doesn't meet the general plan. That was just a just approved. So I think R one eight is great. It'll be a great project. It'll be a benefit to those that are around it as far as values and assets. We're ha- I'm happy to talk to whoever the future home builder is on a cul-de-sac. I love cul-de-sacs when I develop land. Cities fire and snow removal don't, but I love cul-de-sacks. So if you guys have any questions, happy to answer them, but I don't have much more to to add.
All right, we do have a couple lights coming on. Councilmember Lamb.
Okay, thank you. I I just want to reiterate what I said to MacArthur Homes. We don't want to have this move forward if it's going to be a land full of apart, not not apartments, but rental homes. So, you know, as you move forward and look for a developer or buyer, we ask, at least I think the majority of us asked, that you find someone that's going to build single-family homes for single families to purchase and not to rent.
They'll, yeah, and I appreciate that. Hundred percent, they'll be single family. Cannot with an R one eight, you can't do anything but single family. And so, yeah, and there, you know, being that there's thirty-three units.
All right, wonderful. Councilmember Whitlock.
And that was basically my question, and I believe you're the landowners, and you shook your heads yes, that you would look for a builder that wants to build homes for people to buy. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
I had no questions. I was just buzzing in early.
All right. I was playing Jeopardy. The correct answer is no. All right, so we're done with the the developer. Bring that back to the council. Discussion and our motion. Councilmember Green.
Just, I I just want to address a couple of things that residents brought up. One, we are very sensitive to the groundwater issue. On the way in, I actually talked to our Public Utilities Director, and we're very well, well, very well aware of the high groundwater in that area to the point where some some stormwater things don't work because it would just flood the area. So we, am I, am I close on that, Greg? Thank you. He's nodding his head yes. So we, so we we're very well aware of the the groundwater issue and what it's going to take to make sure that the stormwater is handled there correctly. We are very, we are very concerned about the traffic. And once again, I'm gonna ask staff with the planning commission to work when we get with the subdivision, the street layout, to make sure that we have some good traffic safety measures. I think that the best traffic safety measure we can get is the one on Thirteenth West. I think if we had something there, it would slow the traffic down going into the neighborhood, and it would definitely slow it down going out. And we probably ought to look at either a cul-de-sac or some some traffic safety measures at Liesel and at whatever that is, fourteen thirty, fourteen seventy, fourteen seventy. On the green space, this is the kind of neighborhood that we cannot require actually green space because it's a straight rezone into R one eight. If this were a higher-density project, we would have the ability to put green space in it, but because this is a straight R one eight zone, it would be just like the surrounding area that we that that's from. I mean, if you look at that over, if you if you get in the Apache helicopter from down at Airport Number, that South Valley Regional fly above it, you'll you'll see that everything between seven, almost everything between Seventy is South and Seventy Eight South is pretty much the identical type of housing. I know there's at least two of us to live in that neighborhood, and I know there's at least a third person in the in 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 the back that lives in the same neighborhood. So when you, when you have city staff that live in the neighborhood, they've got a vested interest to make sure that it doesn't, it doesn't hurt them as well. To address the impact fee issue, I will tell you that, and unless I'm mistaken, the impact fees go for new parks. We don't use impact fees for ongoing maintenance of parks. So when any of these, when any of these new developments pay their impact fees, it actually does go to build new parks in West Jordan City. And I I will just point out, because I don't use that part very often as well. But I will, I will give credit to the former council member McConaughey who just called in, so I'll throw you under the bus, Chris. What we all forget is that the Jordan River Parkway that runs just east of us is a major city park. And we always forget that, and it's a great park. And there's actually another small city park that we need to figure out how we get better access to over in on the pond over by Bateman's in no, not Plum Creek. It's on the south side of seven, it's on the north side of Seventy is South. Just east of Thirteenth East. There's actually a small park in there.
McHeather Park.
Thank you. And so sometimes we forget those, and then there's another park just on the other side of Seventy is South between Seventieth and the LDS State Center. So but we don't use, we don't use impact fees for ongoing park maintenance. We actually build new parks for with that. And if if just so that you know, we are actually, when we completed the station area plan for the Gardner Village Station Area Plan and that we approved not too long ago, there's a substantial regional park tied to Jordan River at about Eighty is South and the river. So we we are trying to make sure that this area does have good, good parts and good amenities for the for the residents. And so, yes, I do live in the area. I drive through that neighborhood a lot. Been down those roads, and so I I do understand your concerns. But when I see some twelve thousand square foot lots in a neighborhood, boy, I can't argue with that. Somebody's gonna, somebody's gonna have a nice house in that back corner with twelve, almost a twelve thousand square foot lot. So anyway, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shelton.
I don't know if this is gonna go over well with everybody here, but I really loved the comment from the public comments on having the the west end of this built out as a cul-de-sac. I thought it was a great idea from the public comments. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. I don't know that that's possible or that we can do it, but and I know I also know that we're not voting on that tonight. And with that said, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve ordinance number twenty-four dash eighteen, a petition by Robbie Thompson slash Utah Land Company for a rezone of nine point seven five acres of property from A five zone agriculture, five acre minimum lots to R one eight zone, single-family residential, eight thousand square foot minimum lots for Taylor Farms located at seventy-two eighteen South Temple Drive, thirteen hundred West.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Shelton, seconded by Councilmember Whitlock. Is there discussion to the motion? Thanks for leaving the alphabet off of this one, by the way. All right, seeing no discussion, let's go ahead and vote.
Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Yes.
Chair Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Thank you. I shall that motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, and thank you again, neighborhood and people for showing up. We always love the participation. The next item up for bids on The Price is Right, this is a resolution twenty-four dash zero sixteen. I probably shouldn't say that. It gives off the wrong impression. Twenty-four dash zero one six authorizing a waiver of fees in the amount of five hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents for Tiny Tim's Foundation for a kids nonprofit five oh one C three organization. This doesn't have a staff member. Yeah. So just for public information on this one, the developer or the developer, the applicant on this has actually canceled their event, so we don't need to waive their fees because they're not going to be imposed any, but we did notice a public hearing. So if you would like to speak to this or to any you know, fee waivers in general, you know, if you like Tiny Tim's, you just want to give them a shout out, whatever it might be, this is your chance for that. So we're still going to have the public hearing. We'll go ahead and open that. Anybody who'd like to address the council on this? You'll have three minutes as well. Don't all rush up at once. I think everybody left. All right, any online for this one?
Yes, there is one. Mr. McConaughey has his hand raised.
Oh, well, let's, let's, this will be good. Let's go to Mr. McConaughey.
I'm not getting a little pop-up saying I can unmute. Does that mean I'm not muted?
You are good.
Awesome. Chris McConaughey, West Jordan resident. Very much appreciate Tiny Tim's and all that they do. Sad to hear about the event cancellation. I'd probably encourage being in favor of this, but again, I would ask staff and the council office to try to encourage service in lieu of fees. There's so much that this group does for our community. It would be really easy to go that route. And personally, I really like being able to quantify how much help this city and its residents are receiving when something like this happens. I know my kids have ended up at Primary Children's more times than I'd like, and very frequently they receive some of those little cars. I would love to know how many children they're able to help, the dollar value of that. It just makes it so much easier when our tax dollars are supporting some of these nonprofits. I very much like the service in lieu of fees rather than the straight waiver fees. So regardless, though, I would have been in favor. Tiny Tim's is fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this? All right, seeing none, we're looking for a motion to table from the council. We'll go to Councilmember Whitlock, though.
I move that we table resolution number twenty-four dash zero sixteen, authorizing a waiver of fees for Tiny Tim Foundation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Whitlock, seconded by Councilmember Lamb. Before we go to discussion, Council Director Anderson has his light on and has for a while now.
I had it on and off. Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify for those that may not know, according to council rules, a motion to table means you can either talk about it later in this meeting after another item has been heard, or it has to be heard by the next meeting. If it's not heard by the next meeting, it effectively is dead. So that's the proper way to do it because the public hearing notice had been sent out, and it was agendized before we were notified that it was being canceled.
Perfect. Councilmember Whitlock.
I just want to say I echo what Mr. McConaughey had to say. Tiny Tim's is a great organization in our city, and I too favor service in lieu of fees.
Wonderful. Councilmember Lamb.
Yes, this is a question for council staff. Is there any indication that they are going to do this event later this year, or did they just cancel with no information?
The only information I have is that they've canceled their event, so I'm assuming it's canceled and they're not holding it at all.
Awesome. Seeing no further discussion, let's go for a vote. Oh, wow, this is not a resolution now. We're voting on a motion to table. So all in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, we'll call that motion approved. That item is tabled. Our next public hearing, tired of it yet? Resolution twenty-four zero one seven, approving an annual action plan for this community development block grant or CDBG, because it just rolls off the tongue for twenty twenty-four, and authorizing the mayor to sign all the associated program agreements. Mr. Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council. The resolution before you tonight will approve the annual action plan for twenty twenty-four and will allow the mayor to sign the grant agreement from HUD when it becomes available. As noted in the staff report, the final numbers are not available yet. These are just estimates. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Oh, my goodness, I don't remember your last name. So sorry, Jeremy. Olson.
It's on the screen at the bottom.
Mr. Olson. I appreciate all the work that goes into this. I think that it helps some great organizations. I was just curious if we had reached out to the governor's homeless czar, basically, to see if I noticed we put a fair amount to Road Home, and I have some personal feelings that we've been using that system for a long time, and it hasn't gotten better. So I just wondered if we had reached out to see if they felt that was the best use of the money. Also, if we didn't, I hope that we do next year.
Yeah, thank you for that question. We haven't specifically talked with the Oling Walker Housing Trust Fund on recommendations, but there are some changes that will be forthcoming in the program that hopefully you can see next year.
Thank you. Any questions, any further questions for staff before the public hearing on this? All right, not seeing any. Thanks for sitting through the sauna with us. Anybody in the audience would like to speak on on this one, go ahead and come on up. And we do have one. Just give us your name, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Josie White, and I am the Development Director at South Valley Services. We first and foremost want to thank everybody for the recommendation to fund us for yet another year.
Yours is actually the next item on the agenda.
No, this is actually a separate grant.
You're on this one, too?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Sorry.
No, no, no. I just wanted to talk about our shelter briefly.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, 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 you're fine. So South Valley Services has actually been in the West Jordan community since we opened twenty-six years ago. And since that shelter has been open and the Community Resource Center has been located in West Jordan City Hall, which is the next item, we've served tens of thousands of survivors, and our program through the shelter teaches survivors self-sufficiency skills so they don't find themselves back up at our doors. But without this service, and even with it, because there's so much demand, survivors are placed in this impossible decision of deciding whether they can return home where their life might be in danger or to homelessness. And that is a situation nobody should ever be placed in. And I am proud to say that with the support of West Jordan City, we are making it so fewer and fewer people have to make that decision. And so, again, I just want to reiterate our thanks, and I'll keep it short. It is hot. It's the end of the night, but thank you again.
Thank you. Appreciate you enduring the sauna with us. Anybody else would like to address the council on this one? All right, any online for this one? Council staff? All right. All right, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing and bring this back to the council for a motion or discussion. Councilmember Green.
I'm gonna move to approve resolution number twenty-four dash zero seventeen.
Ken.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Whitlock. Discussion to the motion. I'll just chime in and say I love our C D B G program. I say it every year, and I love the causes that those grants go to help and fund. There, it's always a handful of them, and it's never as many as we'd like to be able to fund. But, but being able to forward that grant money on and having a little bit of a voice into, into where that goes, I think that's, it's a, it's a great, wonderful program. And I appreciate the staff's work on that and also all the organizations that come and apply. So thank you so much. And with that, we'll go to a roll call vote on this.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes six to zero.
Wonderful, wonderful. And last but not least, in the public hearing alphabet soup for tonight, we have item six E, resolution twenty four dash zero one five, authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with South Valley Services for space in City Hall. And this will go to Ariel.
Hello.
Mr. Campos, thank you.
Hello, all. As you stated before, I'd just like to add to note on top of that to S V S, it's been a pleasure to work with them. They've been very malleable and nimble with our request and prerequisites that we have for them possibly coming into this space, like updating their insurance and things like that. They've been very quick to do so, and just like to say thank you to them for being so consistent with their communication. So upon that, historically, the city has leased office based to third parties, including the Chamber of Commerce, district attorneys, and including S V S, as we just heard from Josie. They liked it so much that when we began our remodel, they talked to y'all. They wanted to assure that if possible, if there was room, that they could have a space again in this very rich resource-filled area that we have in West Jordan. The space is located in our southeast corner, and it's about a thousand square feet. So with that in mind, when we did our remodel, we had that in mind for future use and future use for our own needs if they were to ever move out of the space. They are very anxious to get into the space, too. Like Josie said, they do a lot of work. And again, being in a location where there's courts near other resources like the library, the rec center, it becomes a very convenient and geolocation for them to host their services to our residents and our state residents and that, because they help everyone who comes into West Jordan. The fiscal note on top of this is that South Valley will reimburse the city in monthly installments over a ten-year period for the construction costs incurred during the renovation and remodel of the space in City Hall. And just to be transparent, by leasing the space to South Valley Services, the city is foregoing the opportunity to lease the space to another office user who may pay the full market lease rate. But in that, I would like to say that with giving them this lower market rate, we are helping our residents with much other different things that they are facing in their life. And just leaving that on the table, if you have any questions for me, I'm here to answer them.
Councilmember Whitelock has a question?
Just one question. When I was reviewing the documents, there's automobile insurance. Do, do they drive people around? Is, why is that part of it? And maybe, maybe it looks like Mr. Lee might have the answer.
Requiring automobile insurance of entities we do contracts with is a pretty standard insurance requirement if they have employees that drive or if they have any organizational cars, just so that any claims against an auto accident that is caused while they're doing business isn't then referred to us.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Green? So I'm going to ask it a very technical question. Generally, under ten eight two and those kind of things, we were, because we're in essence doing something at less than fair market value, and those fee waiver type things, because literally that's what we're doing, right? We're waiving the lease amounts. I didn't see, and maybe I missed it, so it wouldn't be the first time I've missed something. Do we know what the value of the lease should be so that the council office has that to keep track of the one percent? And if we don't have it, can we generate that so the council office has that so that as we look at fee waivers and the one percent of the budget thing that's required by ten eight two that we have that number just to keep track of?
Yes, I do have that number in the ten eight two study. I looked for the average rental space per square foot in a C-class model space, as we are not offering S V S any marketing or their own parking garage or any signs to be displayed out of City Hall. So I do have that attached to ten eight two study, and I can't provide that. And I might have misheard the question.
It's listed in the ten eight two study, eighteen thousand dollars a year.
Okay, yeah, I just, now that I scrolled through it again, I saw, I find, okay. But we need to make sure that the city staff has that number because that would go towards the one percent. Is that right, Mr. Chandler? Okay. I just want to make sure that we're, as we keep track of that stuff, we've got that number. All right, any further questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead to the public hearing on this one. And again, we'll open this up for anybody who'd like to speak. You have three minutes to address the council on this issue. And you're welcome to come back up if there's anything else you'd like to say.
So the only thing I would add is that this location, well, two things, it enables us to serve thousands of survivors versus just five hundred in our shelter, not just five hundred, but our reach is, I'm not good at math, we've reached like almost three thousand people with this location. In addition, well, twenty five hundred plus the five hundred in our shelter. And this is a prime location because there are other things in the area, like the park, the library, the courthouse, the police department. So if somebody's location were being tracked, they'd have a cover. And so we also run into the situation where not everybody who needs services also needs shelter. And so we reach people who have a safe place to live or might be in a situation where it's bad, but not bad enough that they need emergency shelter. So we can work on them with an exit plan before they get to the situation where they're homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm asking anybody else to run to the microphone. Anybody else? So come on up. I wasn't sure if there'd be anybody. So excellent.
We, and I'm the program director for South Valley Services. I just wanted to say we are grateful for you allowing us to use that space. We were in the building in the past. We're also grateful to the mayor who come and visit with us, and the staff have been wonderful. So we just changing life. Most of our victims are traumatized, and they are finding a place to stay. So having staff here in the, in this building mean a lot because most of the people who are homeless who pass by can start by, and we can take care of them. So I just wanted to say thank you very much for the opportunity, and thank you for helping us out. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Guess I shouldn't make assumptions. Anybody else who would like to speak? I think you're the only two members of the public left, so we got you. Anybody online for this one?
Yes, the only one online that desires to speak is Mr. McConaughey.
Color me shocked. Go ahead. Let's, Mr. McConaughey, we'll give you a three minutes.
Chris McConaughey, West Jordan resident. The only service I didn't hear called out was the Health Department. Having the Health Department, the courts, police, fire, having tracks right there, we're able to help a lot of folks within the Greater Salt Lake Valley. One of the other reasons that this is beneficial, I highly encourage supporting this, is because A, they're right there in our backyard, but B, when the county is looking at places to host less savory services, it's very beneficial for us to be able to point to South Valley and the intimate partnership that we have with them, to be able to show that this is how we're serving the community in hopes that we don't have to deal with some of those other services that are more problematic. South Valley has done so much good for so many people. Very proud of our city for continuing to partner with them, making space for them in City Hall. I would just encourage the council to continue that support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else online, Mr. Anderson?
No. No, there is no one else online that desires to speak.
Excellent. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring this back to council. I'll go, oh, who's chair? Mr. Burton was the first with his light on. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Chris McConaughey took a little bit of my thunder when he mentioned how we get credit for that. With the help of the Utah League of Cities and Towns last year, it was made, our, the South Valley Sanctuary did not count as a homeless shelter, but now it does, which helps us financially, it helps keep them, and it gives us credit for having a shelter within our city. So that, that is a very big plus that happened last year. Also, I just want to throw out, the other advantage of this location is there's a track stop really close.
Both very good points. Councilmember Lamb?
I'm ready to make a motion unless there's more comments.
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion, or I move to approve resolution number twenty four zero one five, authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with South Valley Services to utilize space in the City Hall.
I beat you. I'll second that motion.
Councilmember Shelton, we're just going to give him the, the green light because he was actually amplified, even though you said it first. So we have a motion by Councilmember Lamb, seconded by Councilmember Shelton and Green. Any discussion to the motion? Councilmember Lamb?
I just wanted to thank Josie. I got to meet Josie a few weeks ago with the Chamber West event, and she is great and does a great job for South Valley Services. So thank you for all you do for us. Just a reminder, if you're still looking for some furniture, that guy right over there is a guy that can help you. So we'll, we'll go from there. But I'm excited to have you guys back in our, in our building.
Councilmember Whitelock?
And while Mr. McConaughey may have stole the mayor's thunder, the mayor took mine because I just wanted to actually thank the mayor for reminding the legislature that we do have a shelter in our community, and thank them for the work that you do. And I love your enthusiasm. Thank you.
And I'll just say, there are some, some people I've heard, you know, over the past several years, as we've talked about leasing space in City Hall to various organizations and different things. Go check out Mill Creek's new City Hall. I walked around that building like four times trying to find out where the City Hall was, because the ground floor is all retail space and like food court and stuff. And I walked around the building three times before I figured out the City Hall was on the second floor. So they're leasing out the whole first floor, because it's next to their Mill Creek Commons area. Anyway, it's kind of an interesting thing. We're doing much better work, I think, with ours. So we'll go to a roll call vote on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom, oh, sorry. Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, and thank you for enduring the Sahara Desert in here with the rest of us. Next item on the, on the agenda is item seven A. This is a business item, resolution twenty four zero one eight, adopting fireworks restrictions for twenty twenty four. And we have Chief Trevino presenting with us today. Chris?
Sir, Council Chair, members of the council, it is good to be with you, even in the warmth. I actually don't mind it. It's a lot of who I am. So we do, we do, we enjoy all the different things that come with it as well. The intent today of my visit with each of you is to look for approval of firework restrictions as outlined in the packet which you've received. The map that you see on your screen actually comes from our city website. We are looking to keep, we're looking to keep restrictions the same in an effort to keep consistency with enforcement and also to ease the pain with residents in the sense that we don't want to be back and forth from two different locations in order to better provide consistency for the residents with regards to firework restrictions. The resolution is there as well, twenty four dash zero one eight, which outlines those same restrictions that you would find on the map. Because of some historical data and also the forecast by the N O A A, which is the National Oceanic Atmosphere, an atmospheric group, that we are expecting, we will, we're expecting to experience temperatures fifty to sixty percent above normal with a rainfall thirty three to forty percent below normal. So with this in mind, we, we look to have the council approve the fireworks restrictions as outlined in the resolution. Second, any questions or comments you might have?
Councilmember Whitelock?
Captain, here's the deal. We have a lot of people now that live west of fifty six hundred west, and some have reached out to me, and they're like, you keep using the same map over and over. And they're right. It's been the same map for six years, but we're building more homes. So, and even though we try, their opinion is we don't do anything anyway. So they're just lighting off fireworks in those neighborhoods anyways. So is there a way that we could maybe include some of the developed areas into where they can light fireworks, even if they live past fifty six hundred? This, there was a different map, but this lovely new device that I got, the battery dies really quick, and I didn't bring the charger tonight, my fault.
I have one if you'd like.
But I know that there was a map that had subdivisions that are west of fifty six hundred. This one that's up currently isn't, isn't the one that shows parcels. But would the fire department be amenable to maybe looking at that and including some of those subdivisions? And if not, why?
I would, I would think that anything's up for discussion. I believe what the code says, it talks about one of the fire officials. I forget the exact verbiage. I was looking for it, but because I don't have it handy, I would hate to misspeak. The code actually talks about the open land. So in our efforts in the past or the previous years, we have tried to capture that as best we could. In those efforts, we could draw a zigzag line throughout it, but then the concern there becomes an enforcement piece. Well, my neighbor this, as you're probably already well aware with a number of different things, I'm, I'm happy to take this back to our fire marshal and have that conversation if, if that's what the council deems appropriate. Where we want to capture that is, is our efforts with this are due to the state by May first. Hence the reason why I'm here tonight. But I think we're happy to have that conversation. We understand what it looks like with that much area open and not being able to discharge fireworks. And second to any other conversation, I, I'm happy to move in that direction if the council deems it appropriate.
I just, I, from what I hear, actually even from someone up here and from people that live out that way, they're lighting them off anyway in those subdivisions.
That is correct.
And by having it the way we have it, we're making them criminals. I don't really want them to be criminals for doing something that our state legislature approves. So I just think that we really need to look at that and not just keep going with what we've always done.
Well, and, and this, this comes at the recommendation of our fire marshal. So that's why we, we bring it to this group, and I'm sure with, with your input, we're happy to make necessary adjustments.
Thank you.
Thank you. We go to Council Director Anderson really quick before we have further discussion on this.
I was just going to mention, the deadline for this maps of middle to the county is May first, which is why it's on the agenda tonight. Councilmember Whitelock, the council leadership has asked that this item, after the summer season, come back to a committee of the whole so there could be a further, further dialogue and deliberation among the council members on changes to future maps. But it is a deadline to May first this year.
Thank you. Councilmember Green is up next. My question was, my question was going to be, and it, and it's probably along the same lines as, as Councilmember Whitelock, and I know why we're, I know why we pick west of fifty six to west of Mountain View, because of all of the, I mean, the, you know, you look at the Rocky Mountain Power right away, just west of Mountain View and a bunch of other stuff. It really does facilitate banning fireworks west of that. But I, I understand her point. My question would, my question would be, not necessarily do we want to allow that in that spot, and it may be something as we talk about this in the future that we can consider. And it may be something as we talk about this in the future that we can consider. Um, are there places in the city that we would allow fireworks that gives us a controlled area that if somebody wanted to to set off fireworks? Um, and they live in a, they live in a banned area or they they live over where we see off a off a Jaguar between twenty-second and Jaguar. They they live around this area or whatever. Is there a way that we could designate? Designate a place to set off fireworks so families could have the fun of setting off fireworks and not worry about setting off the the whole neighborhood? Just something to, you know, ask to 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 see if there's a way we could do that um, to allow people to do that, that would be uh, a way that we can, and it would be more controlled. So that would be my question. Yeah, like a church parking lot or, you know, something, whatever the case may be. My my cul-de-sac, you know, we go set off our our fireworks in the middle of the cul-de-sac. So but yeah, you know, you know what I'm saying?
I I do, councilmember Green, and I understand what the question is. However, I'm I'm not sure that I have that answer. That would be something that I would think as as a city, as an entity could look at. But the reality is, is I would say anywhere that's not restricted. I mean, I I'd I'd love to say, I mean, I I look at, as I look at uh, city code or not city code, excuse me, state law, it talks about uh, the wildland urban interface area, and this would be um, on fifteen A dash five dash two oh two point five down at one point one three, the urban interface area, which means a line area or zone where structures or other human development meet or inter or intermingle with undeveloped wildland. And to speak to councilmember Whitelock's point, yes, that that has been a line that's been established. And and we felt with some of the data we had last year that that continues to improve. I want to say last year we had less fires on the west side of fifty-six hundred. Correct me if I'm wrong, I wanted to say it was around nine uh, during that uh, the fourth and also the twenty-fourth. So for us, that was a success, but I understand the constituents that you might have and their concern.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Shelton was up next.
Thank you. Uh, I think this, the line is something that that maybe we should look at. I'd like to have um, more of a conversation down the road. I think because of the deadline that we're facing at the state level, that we should table this discussion. Uh, bring it back in the in the fall when we have time to really consider it and and look at these lines. Um, but for now, I'd be in favor of just passing what's before us so that they can meet their deadline.
Thank you, councilmember Lamb.
I just want to make a reminder that for every person west of fifty-six that wants fireworks, you've got the same number of people that don't want them. So it's it's a fifty-fifty thing. Who's side do you take?
Yeah, and I just wanted to to chime in. I mentioned this before and we had the map up a couple of weeks back. And um, you know, we knew that this was coming is we're we're a little bit um, we get to rely on the fire marshal, which is great. We have cover, right? We we pass this and we get to say, no, the fire marshal said this is where the line should be and we're going to trust his expertise. He's the expert, he's the pro. Um, the one with the education and the background, the training to to make this call, which is great. We get to do that. Um, he however, gets to justify why he drew the map the way he did. Um, I just worry just looking at this and just coming from the, you know, many years of history we've had looking at this issue that the line is getting, like councilmember Whitelock said, it's getting less and less sensical. Sensical, is that a word? Sensical. I know it's the things we hang on our tree at Christmas time to make it smell real, they call it sensical. Uh, it's making less and less sense. Um, as development happens, there's areas that are now in the restricted zone that are just as developed and fire uh, department accessible as there are areas on that are in the permitted area. And there are areas in the permitted area that are just as risky, just as exposed, just as problematic as areas that are now in the restricted area. So we need to like kind of maybe, this is why we'll have the discussion later in the year, right? We'll have the work session and we'll talk about what we need to do and what the the philosophy is, the thinking behind it is. I know the state kind of handcuffs us as far as what we are allowed to do as far as the prohibitions go. Um, you know, with that urban wildland interface that you mentioned and and some of the other things that that are in the state code. But the state code does also give us, you know, go to a a major roadway for ease of drawing the map, which opens up a lot of areas. So in any case, um, just for future conversation, we definitely need to look at it. We can't keep, you know, the city has changed over the last several years and it's time to it's it's time to acknowledge that and reflect that. But for this year, councilmember Shelton's right, we're up against a a hard line, so um, I I appreciate the work on that.
I believe councilmember Whitelock had a question earlier.
Did you want to come back in, councilmember Whitelock?
No, I was really gonna just say, seriously, you don't want to fire. Come on.
I I actually don't. And the urban, the reason for the urban interface, I've been on the urban interface fires that start in unincorporated land or unpopulated land and push really fast to homes.
I know.
And that's that's the concern.
But you're a fireman and you guys like to run into burning buildings.
I'd like to think I'm risk averted. Um, with that being said, I'm I'm happy to provide where those fires have shown up, some historical data that would provide ease of operations when we we hit that meeting in the fall.
Yep, that would be great. Just, yeah, that's something to make sure that we have coming up. Councilmember Bedore.
Just one bizarre thing. Um, I need to point out that as a junior in high school, I won the state debate competition under the guise of outlawing all fireworks in all of the United States. And uh, so I'm probably not the person to talk about. Of course, I only did that because it angered everyone so much that couldn't debate me. They just got angry. So uh, anyway, so I'm gonna keep out of this one. But I do agree antiquated maps aren't doing anybody any good right now.
Councilmember Lamb.
So speaking of heat, is there any way to approve something and get out of here?
We need a motion. We need a motion to approve. Uh, I'll go ahead and move to approve resolution twenty-four dash zero eighteen.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by councilmember Jacob, seconded by councilmember Lamb. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Chair Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
This time, yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
I show that motion passes six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna move to approve consent items. That's the next item on the agenda.
Second.
The minutes from March twenty-seventh. Um, for both meetings, we have a motion to approve by councilmember Green and it was seconded by councilmember Whitelock before it was called. Any discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. All right, we'll rule that passes and seeing no further items on the agenda, any further comments? Seeing none, I'll call us adjourned. That was not a firework, that was just the gavel. Hey, Warren, can you print out a copy of the map? Just that slide or whatever, just.